Heading called to order our meeting tonight. This is a Whitefish Planning Commission. It's Alan.
Alan, 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 Alan.
I got it. People good.
All right. If you're actually here, turn off your meeting and not be here. So this is November nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, and we're right at six P M. So we'll go ahead and start. This is a wrap-up session from our last transportation meeting. Most of you guys were here. We had a great public turnout. So thank you to all of you guys for coming back again. We're gonna, I'll run through the agenda quickly, just so everyone's clear on what's gonna happen tonight. We will do our normal general public comment, and I just want to remind everyone that last meeting, we had very robust public comment on transportation. We wrapped that up and finished it. So if your comment isn't about that, you can still submit in writing, and Alan is still posting those. But tonight, if it's specifically about transportation, just hold it near and dear to your heart. You will have another another time to comment at city council meeting when all of this comes back around. But tonight, you'll listen to the discussion from the board taking all of your public comment into consideration. It doesn't necessarily mean that we will specifically talk about each public comment, but we have considered it. It's been incorporated either before. If we don't talk about it, it doesn't mean it doesn't matter. It just means it's something that's addressed in another element or not for consideration right now. So we'll do the general public comment, and then we have T Z B here again to to give us a presentation and introduce themselves for anybody who hasn't met, and we'll have a short, probably ten-minute public discussion after they present. So you guys can ask some questions, give any feedback, and then we'll move on to our discussion of the transportation element. And then at the very end, we'll have another general public comment. So anything that wasn't addressed that you're still concerned about, bring it back up to us. So with that, we'll go ahead and start with the general public comment. So anyone who wants to address this, please stand up, give your name and your address, and let us know what you'd like us to know.
All right. Mary Flowers, Citizens for Flathead, Office 777, South Main, Kalispel. I'm here today for comments that I just handed out to everyone in the board should have them. Follow up on the memo that we gave you last meeting on the same topic. This is a little more specific and has more concrete recommendations within it. So we are asking that the planning commission holds a special work session at some point following this meeting today. I don't know whether you can schedule that, but fairly quickly and before your next public hearing. And we think this should be done to adopt a set of revised and clearly set forth public participation guideline for the remainder of the timeline and the process for final adoption of the land use plan and future land use map. We suggest these guidelines include the following actions by the planning board to give guidance votes to the planning staff and to the public at large. Your request line for topics, meetings, other comments from the remainder of the review of hearing. And this is somewhat Alan and I think the board suggests some of this new, it hasn't been made public.
Yes, obviously. I can see this, you know, all process, a lot of time. Now, can I ask, can I make a comment about something I've said after the close of the comment period last, last meeting?
Yeah, this is your general public comment. So as long as it's not specifically about transportation.
Transportation, that's what I came out here because it's something that was said after it was closed last night. Watching the video, I should make a short comment about that. That's what I came there.
Well, is it, it's not something that you already submitted? If it's specifically about transportation, because we have closed it, it's not fair on a person, then I think we have more that people haven't said yet. So you're welcome to still submit it in writing, and Alan will post it for us. It won't be part of this discussion, but we will revisit this again, and then city council will also revisit this. We actually just got a new work program scheduled today from Dana. So if you stick around, you can see maybe some of the dates when transportation will come back. And then also in the land use section, there will be times that it'll kind of interwist with transportation again. So thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else with general public comment? Rhonda?
I realize public comments. My comment is that I had to leave that meeting. So I waited to see the minutes or the recording so that I could understand what else had happened, and I could not find them. So then, when I went into the link for this meeting, which became available yesterday, I think, or maybe a few days ago, there was a whole bunch of public comments in a file, but they were all the written public comments, and I didn't see any notes about the comments made in person. And so I couldn't get myself up to date. And since it's been a while, I wondered how you guys are able to now address the public comment that isn't reported exactly.
Thank you, Rhonda. Anyone else with general public comment?
I'm Dick Soler, and I'm just gonna back up what she's saying. This is my technology. My phone number is written on the back. So I have to ask my wife to go on the Internet to try to get that meeting two weeks ago. That's about the tenth time she said no more. So I'm just one person that finds like this, but I could never get to see what happened at that meeting. And I don't know when it came online. I asked about four people in this office down here to get it online, and I don't know if it ever did your online.
Thank you. Any further public comment before we go to our presentation from consultants? Well, I don't know if we want to answer public comment right now, but I do, I do want us to clarify at some point. And I think it's gonna be in sort of a wrap-up period where we go over the schedule, how we are recording. So if now seems good, because some of you guys may not want to stay through the whole time, then we can definitely do that to clarify. Because I know some board members would also like answers as far as that. So before we go on to our presentation, we can have Steph and Dana. Dana has a member of staff, but Alan also address where to find minutes, when the recording is up, if there are any transcripts or minutes. From our, I can answer quickly. We take notes. So I have here still in front of me notes of each one of you who gave a public comment last time. But that doesn't help you as a public to review those if you had to leave earlier, simply weren't here. So Alan and Dana, if you want to address that.
I have a public comment. I raised my hand.
Online as well. Okay, so you can go ahead here, and then we'll go to anybody who's online since you're present. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to address the letter to you.
Can you state your name?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
Speaking to that as the executive director of. He asked things of city staff as they did in this letter. There's some contradictions where on one side, it's asking the city staff speed up the process and give two weeks in advance for a public comment. And on the other side, it tends to put more burdens on city staff to go line by line to every change from the two thousand seven growth policy. I think when it comes to that particular question, we think that the changes to the two thousand seven growth policy are the entire reason why we're doing this process, right? This is about twenty forty-five. The problems and solutions will need to grow at this at that point, not in two thousand seven. So I just think that making sure that you are being very particular about understanding the difference between problems of process and problems of policy and how problems of policy often get coded in problems of process. We have more and more opportunities to comment to try to move the policy discussion towards what we want in the end. I think that's different than actually having substantive complaints with how processes are taking place. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll turn to our online before we let Dana address. So any online general public comments?
Yes, I, oh, excuse me. Who's, whose turn is it?
Go ahead, Jenna.
Okay, thank you. And excuse me, I, the audio wasn't working at the beginning, so I'm not sure if this has already been discussed or something. I'm sure you were aware the audio wasn't working at the beginning of the meeting. But what I would like to comment on is something that Craig Workman said after the public comment period was closed. And so I wasn't able to comment after he responded. Hopefully, this is okay. So what I would like to comment on is that Craig made a comment about.
So this may be, I'm sorry, this may be again a comment on the transportation section specifically, and I think that you're in the same boat as Mr. McCann here. Potentially wanting to talk again about the public comment during, and I understand this is something that Craig clarified after, but we're gonna stick right now to general public comment and not specifically on transportation. You can still submit that to us.
Okay, I'll submit it. I'm just kind of confused about the meeting. I thought I thought it was stated that there would be a time for public comment, since you are talking about the transportation. It's confusing to me. I come kind of. Shut out.
No, I think that was because we were muted in the beginning, and I apologize for that. But we did close the public comment from the last session that was specifically on transportation. So the public comment period on that is closed. And then tonight, we're having board discussion. So that means any of the comments that came in during public comment period are discussed, but the transportation-specific public comment is now closed as far as a public discussion. So I hope that clarifies for you. And if you have anything in general about the process or something else happening, you can state it now, but anything specifically about transportation is closed.
So but the public comment is open for writing, but it's not open for me to speak, is what you're saying.
That's correct. You can at any point submit something in writing, and it will be posted. And and you will have a chance when we revisit this, and city council will also revisit it. So I encourage you to look for that, and thank you for joining.
I have one more thing, then it's, it's general. It's not about transportation.
Go ahead.
If I submitted something in writing, how do you receive it?
It's posted. Yeah, so Alan, sorry, just wait a moment, and Alan will give you instructions on how to pull that up.
I know how to, I know how to put it in writing. I just wasn't sure if you were getting all the letters or if you were getting a if you were getting like a synopsis, or if you're getting a chart where how, you know, shows what people's concerns are. You know, how, were you getting, are you getting everybody's complete comments?
So thank you for that comment, and we will address it later. Okay?
Very much. Good luck with the meeting.
Thank you. All right, anyone else online for general public comment? Okay, Nathan?
Yeah, I just wanted briefly, semi-briefly kind of touch on the discussions about process since it's something that we've heard about, I guess, a whole lot in these meetings and Whitefish isn't doing this on its own, I guess. Columbia Falls and Kalispel are also kind of working on this, although Columbia Falls is kind of just get started, but Kalispel is going through this process. So we can kind of compare and contrast a little bit, and I would say certainly in in Flathead County, and I also think probably throughout the state, Whitefish is really an outlier in how these these meetings and this process is running. Just with the amount of control that is trying to be exerted over the process by by a few people and and by a planning commission. So in Kalispel, for example, the the planning commission kind of makes suggestions similar to what we see happen at about every city council meeting, at the end of the meeting, when the the council gives direction to staff, and then staff will go work on something and bring it back at some later point. The council's not telling them word for word, verbatim, kind of what to put in that stuff, and that's kind of what we're seeing happen in Kalispel. That makes sure that that process stays efficient and that that Kalispel and and Whitefish, I guess, in Columbia Falls can all stay within the statutory timelines that we're under from the state. So that makes me think about a discussion that happened a little bit earlier today when the Community Housing Committee met with with the consultants, and specifically, that discussion was about kind of the time crunch that people are feeling under with the the draft of our land use plan and housing element. And from my perspective, that's a problem entirely of our own making. And a lot of that is due to the inefficiency of the of the process through this board so far. So on May seventeenth, twenty twenty-six, we will have had three full years to comply with M Lupa. And we actually started working on this. I looked back right before this meeting in February of twenty twenty-three, even before M Lupa became a law. We knew we were gonna address the growth policy, and we started working on it. We kicked off this process for Vision twenty forty-five in May of twenty twenty-three, so three full years have gone by. So any compression in the timeline at this point really rests firmly on our own shoulders because of the way that the process has gone through this board over the last two and a half years. And unfortunately, and we've kind of seen a broken process at play in Whitefish, and any suggestion otherwise is a lie. But we can't change that now, and and all we can do is kind of get through the final elements and get it to the city council so they can adopt the plan, and we can kind of move forward. And I'm looking forward to the discussions here of the final chapters that you guys have. Thanks.
Thank you, Nathan, for that comment. All right, anyone else online with general public comment? Any other audience?
I have a comment. Yeah. Yeah. Sorry. Hi. Yeah, I just wanted to say that thank to thank staff and the consultants for the visioning session we had last night. It was really great to see so many community members out there participating and getting really engaged. With that, I know some people who couldn't attend and were really hoping for an online option. I don't know if that's in the works, but I would strongly encourage that potential for people to participate online. And then with that, I think if we're going to have an online option, I would encourage the staff and consultants to look at some measures to make sure that people are only participating once if they do decide to submit comments online. Maybe by having people submit their names, their email address, even their address. Hope those things would be kept private from the larger community, but it would just help ensure that people only submit comments online once, and then maybe people who commented in person aren't then also going back and commenting online as well. So anyway, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Marty. All right. Anybody else here or online for general public comment? Okay, so we'll go ahead and close this first general public comment session, and I remind you, there'll be another time at the end to comment generally if you have something about tonight's meeting or in general. So now we will let Alan, Dana, whomever would like to address the schedule coming up. I think this might be a good time to clarify that, and then also access to either transcripts or minutes, how people can find those. And then at that time, to also clarify what happens for written comments. Where do they go? How do we find them? Thank you. Go ahead.
I'm chief of block, longest planner, project manager of Vision Whitefish. I'm gonna answer this a couple more very specific names. I'll let Dana kind of deal with the larger discussions from the letter. The first thing is by agency comment. So every time you get a draft plan element, there's a staff report that goes along with that, and that staff report has a table in it that shows which agencies received this comment. All the public comments that you received, agency comments in there. If you look at the transportation comments that you received, you'll see comments from Flathead County Road and Bridge. You'll see comments from M D T. So all there's, we sent out to all those agencies listed in the study report, we've only received a handful of comments. So all the agency comment and the public comments are all there. If you go on the Vision Whitefish website, on the right-hand side, there's a, it'll say documents, and you'll see a folder that says public comments. And every plan element, I separate all the public comments into a PDF. There's a hundred and sixty pages for transportation. And then I update them. When I say the word real time, it's like, you know, a few times a week, because I can only do so much. I'll get four or five emails. I'll pull them into the PDF. I will update the PDF on the website, and you have within a few days. So all the public comment is there. If you don't know where it is, recently, like in the last week, I put a disclaimer on the top of the website, all the tabs that tells everybody where. So so on the top of the website, all tabs now, I tell you, we have drafts where they're at and where you can find the public. So it's all there. Yeah, it's not me. It's not me.
Sorry about that.
So written comment, most of what I get is on email, almost all of it. When I get the written comment, again, I will upload it on on to the webpage. Every single plan element has a PDF associated with it with all public comment. Core analogically, it's a lot. Have fun reading it. I also include all the public comment into your staff folders. And what I've started doing is after the deadline, we have, the deadlines are there for a reason, right? Because there's only so much time we have to do this and turn around. So the the public comment that you get, if it's after that deadline, I also have another folder in there, which you'll see. It says public comment received after deadline. So you get all that as well. That we, we, we had, I don't think I've ever in my career had to 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 have anybody tell me to do less work. So having to not incorporate all the public comment into an early version is is actually a directive of me telling me to do less work. So I'm not gonna complain about that. Happy to do less work, Mary. As far as the online version goes, we are working with the consultants right now. I believe there is going to be an online version of the visioning or the the land use scenarios. We're trying to figure out how to make it fair, right? Because I think there was some concern about, you know, you know, everybody, if everybody wants to weigh in, they can. We're just trying to see how can we make sure that only, everybody can only weigh in once, right? Because we don't want plenty of people, you know, one person creating multiple emails or whatever and saying the same comment. So we're working on it. Thomas kind of mess me either next week or the following week we'll have something. It's not gonna be tomorrow. So so Dana, that's all I have to say.
So two things, I'll just, thanks for touching on the public comment. I'm data, I'm the manager, if anybody doesn't know me. But on to the comments, and and I did discuss with Mary this today about comparing the two thousand seven growth policy to our current draft. Everybody reads words differently, and what you interpret something to mean and what we have written now versus back then can be interpreted differently. And as city manager, my job is to direct staff and also know what our capacity is as a as an organization. And to have our staff add that on at this point will only delay the process, and I don't want that to happen. As our volunteer, I get that planning commission, though. That is the job that you would have, is to review what we had before and then what's been created by you with the support of staff if you're concerned that things are not carried over or things that should be in there that you don't want in there. So that would be, that's my suggestion. I don't think we have staff capacity to go back through the two thousand seven growth policy and compare what we've done to date.
We, well, we did that as part of the process, every single chapter.
We do. So as staff, they are already doing it, but to document that and create a new staff report to also identify every report that we have used or every reason for staff comments or staff drafts would be extremely time-intensive. And again, I don't think we have the time for that. Staff drafts, where staff is sending drafts around, those are not public records because they're not official records yet. They are a draft in progress. That is just a fact. So you will not see those agency and formerly referred to as stakeholder comments. Those are all out there. I confirm that. You can look on Engage Whitefish down the right side. But the one area that I do think that we can improve our information to the public is the timeline, because we know we're moving fast, things are changing, we're working with consultants. For the most part, you'll see in this this plan, we have a hard deadline. The deadline is the council's final work session on. And that has thirty days to be effective. So really, we have to be done with that in April with the council, April twentieth. So we start with that date, and we move everything back to where we are today. What do we have to get done? So on here, you will see that we have zoning work sessions scheduled for you guys starting in February, actually. You would, you have the public hearing for the document February nineteenth. Before that, you have December for housing and January for land use. I think it'd be really excellent tonight for the commission to consider setting dates in those months, not just for the public, but for you, for planning vacations or your time off, because we all need it. So with that, I think that if tonight you can take that time, you could do it at the end of the meeting, but might get some feedback from consultants here for the land use section, let's see if they might be in town to to schedule those meetings if they don't. So that that would be my suggestion, but we will get this posted as soon as you give us feedback on that. But otherwise, we'll get this up on Engage Whitefish to have that information. You can see on here when the council public hearings are, when your public hearing is. And again, the public hearing is February nineteenth. That's one meeting, and I understand that there might be interest in having two public hearings, but the only way you can feasibly do that, you cannot have a public hearing, I mean, I really tell you not after the nineteenth. We'd want to put one for that because we have to have the packet due for council on February twenty-fifth. So the the timeframe of if you do significant changes during the final public hearing on the draft plan, staff still has to make those edits before it gets in the council packet. And so that's where we want to make sure that we have the timeline is really kind of solidified around those dates. So hate to put pressure on everybody. Beginning of twenty-five, sixth, we're gonna be crazy busy. But just know that those are, those are really big areas. But, you know, overall, like like Alan said, I'd like direction from the planning commission to no longer make edits based on public comment. I'm completely comfortable with that. In fact, I wouldn't recommend us doing that in the future updates at all. In fact, even the the chart might not be something that staff should even be involved in, because you're still summarizing public comment and how we're viewing it. But to keep the process similar and have the tools still that you need, if you would like us to no longer make edits to the public draft essentially that's out there, and then you make those at your permission, just give us that direction, and then we we know, and then we can move forward with that process. So those are just my comments on the overall process. I don't want to take any more time because we are consultants here and.
Well, I do want to quickly, if somebody can clarify, are there any minutes, transcripts, or when does the video come out from these sessions?
So the videos are posted on Engage White, on Engage Whitefish. One of the things that we have on a timeline is once we do the Teams meeting, we actually have Jake, who does our video, audio for city council meetings. He's converted those into a YouTube video. So there's time it takes for that conversion and and based on his availability to get that done. This last meeting, there was, Teams did do an update. Why we don't want to reuse Teams for council meetings, actually, without our knowledge, it did not get recorded in the beginning. Minutes are going to be drafted for based on the video, but right now, the video is your minutes. But minutes for a meeting like this do not have to be detailed words of what was discussed. It can say public comment was taken on the transportation section, and then it's actually your actions that are what are actually addressed in minutes. So the video is actually more detailed than we would ever give compared to of minutes. But the last meeting, we did not have a public comment for that first. The first portion of that, the first hour, we had, was, did not have recording. So that was unfortunate, but it's where we are right now.
All right. Thank you, Dana.
Just to clarify. The reason we don't is it was a systems issue. It wasn't anybody intentionally, hopefully, with any information back or trying to hide the ball. There's nothing up to us that happened.
We discovered it during the meeting.
While it was going, it was updated.
No, I just want to clarify that to the public. There is no insidious idea that we're trying to delete these things or not publish them or not make them available. That's not what's going on here.
That is a net effect of if you don't have a public comment, you have the seven days, and you don't want to have a public in public. I don't even know. Even if it's not an incident, if that's the net effects of, yeah, have comment, and we're not gonna publish it.
So, right. So, right.
What I took away from the management.
Right now, we're not going to have public comment, but we can readdress this in a bit. Um, you can definitely share this general public comment, once everything is over, we have our last public comment. Um, so if it's not something that's answered during this meeting, then let us know. Um, so we're going to move on now, that wraps up general public comments, some responses that were kind of pertinent, that we can't wait, because people may leave. Um, we're going to move on to our consultants, and then we'll do the discussion of transportation, and then another public comment. All right, so introducing CZB.
Thanks so much for having us here, it's, uh, it's nice to be here in person, we apologize for our virtual meeting the last time, we had a little bit of a hard time getting on, it's nice to be here in person. Um, so what we thought we would do tonight is walk you through a presentation that is similar to what we walked the council through on Monday night, and then, um, today, we met with the Housing Committee. We've wanted to make sure that everybody is seeing the, uh, the same material, so that we're all on the same page, many of you have probably seen it, but we wanted just to make sure that, um, we are all indeed following the same script, same page, you understand where we are. So, uh, again, my name is Thomas Eddington with CZB, I have three other team members here, Eric Amy in the back, Lauren Hall, and then, uh, Matt Ingles up front here. We've been working collectively on the land use settlement, uh, looking forward to continuing this work with you. And, um, we are currently, yeah, if we go to the next one, we are currently in, oh, you're following me. Uh, we're currently in the alternative selections phase, or the scenario phase of our work, and so much of the work that was done last night helped us understand direction, uh, that the community thinks is relative, that is important relative to the land use plan. So, if you go to the next one, you guys have seen this slide before, um, Alan's included it in the, um, much of the growth policy, uh, presentations he's presented, certainly the land use plan will include a land use map, so that you have an understanding of where recommendations are for different land uses, commercial, residential, et cetera. And, uh, of course, this builds upon some of the data that we are currently, uh, reviewing and analyzing. That will be a part of this plan, we're not there yet. Um, as we think about preparing a land use plan, uh, we've got really what we consider two foundational building blocks for a plan, and that is, uh, comprised of street types and place types. So street types are kind of defined as those physical characteristics of the street, that includes streetscape, that includes the function of the street, um, that includes the physical characteristics of the street. Much of the community, much of the way we view a community is by way of public right-of-way, it's typically fifteen to twenty-five percent of the land use in a community, and it's certainly where most of us experience other, um, other, uh, other areas of our community. Second component is, uh, place types, and place types are, um, the desired characteristic that we want for an area, or a district, or a neighborhood, it's how we, um, how we feel the character of that area, is how we feel it functions, how we feel it contributes to the community. So if you've got the street types, and you overlay that with the place types, that's how we get to the future land use policies. So it started a bit of a higher elevation, and we drop down as we start to think about the plan, and ultimately, the future land use map. Um, so we've been, uh, we've had the opportunity to engage with the community, um, in person in September, uh, it's important for us to really listen to the community, to understand all sides of the community, take that input, turn it into strategic actions, create partners, and ultimately, get it to the Planning Commission, and get it to the council, where there are no surprises at the end. We know that getting any plan over the goal line, goal line is hard, we know it's arduous, you know, there are, uh, community issues that have yet to be resolved, that get resolved along the way. When we get to the end, uh, we hope that there are no surprises, as we get it for you all, and the town council. So in September, we had the opportunity to meet with the community, we had two in-person events, we had, uh, about fifty plus people each night, and during that evening, our goal was to have the community convey to us the character of the community, we were starting to touch on to place types and street types, but to convey to us what they thought the character of the community was, uh, but as they looked at a map, as they looked at different neighborhoods, at different areas. We got that information from the community, those maps are on the Engage Whitefish site, so you can see the maps that were done by groups at tables. We then had the opportunity, oh, I should stop and point out that, we also received beyond the maps, just kind of general anecdotal information, just information about the community that people felt was important to convey. Uh, people noted the importance of US ninety-three and forty as a gateway coming into the community, the uniqueness, um, of the downtown, uh, as a valued place, as kind of the heart of the community, uh, concerns with regard to ingress, egress, and evacuation out of the northern part of the community with one single, uh, route coming down Wisconsin. Uh, people noted the need for, uh, potentially secondary access roads south of the tracks, uh, during, uh, high-traffic, uh, moments, and we heard from many people the importance of, uh, affordable workforce housing throughout the community, and how that could impact the character both positively, and where they may have had concerns. So we had all of that information from the in-person workshops. And then in October, we had an opportunity to go online for a couple of weeks, we got about a hundred and fifty participants, and we essentially asked the same thing. We had six areas that we had, uh, that we had questions about in terms of how the community would define character. Um, you could see those areas, I'll go through these one by one on a slide, but we had the six areas, that's on the left side, we asked them to describe character, which is essentially a place type. And then the middle slides, um, we asked about, uh, six different road sections, how would they define those as street types, what was the character? And then, uh, the third map that you see there was a, uh, was us asking about areas, the six areas that were identified, that we asked them to identify place types, we asked them what the likelihood for change was in those areas, uh, between now and twenty forty-five. So, you could take a look here, the, the place types are on the left, these are the descriptions that were provided in the online survey, kind of those high-level descriptions that just, that define the physical character of those areas. You could see on the right, we had the six areas, uh, and what, what the majority of people provided in terms of feedback was as follows. So north of the tracks, generally between Iowa and Texas, they defined as urban neighborhood. You could see at the top of the left, that's smaller residential lots, walkable, kind of a gridded pattern. They also defined, um, second to the bottom one, residential area east of downtown, also as urban neighborhood, yeah, smaller residential lots, walkable community. So north of the tracks and, um, east of downtown, urban, uh, neighborhood. The residential area west of downtown, as well as Carroll Avenue, were defined as suburban neighborhood. You'll see on the left, that's larger residential lots, curved streets, attached garages, driveways, that kind of thing. Downtown is, of course, its own unique space, it was defined as mixed use downtown, there were no surprises there. Um, and then we have Route ninety, uh, US ninety-three, south of, uh, the river, commercial corridor definition, primarily commercial uses, automotive, um, friendly, um, larger lots, uh, parking lots, uh, larger setbacks, et cetera. So we were able to get both in-person and online, and understanding from the community what they defined the character, as that helps us to get to place types, which ultimately start to land closer to the ground with the future land use map. And then, this is the area where we asked about, uh, the likelihood of change over the next ten to twenty years. So you can see that four of the areas are in the dark purple, those areas were noted as, I think it is very likely, quite a bit, there's untapped potential here. So the north of the tracks, residential area west of town, uh, Carroll Avenue, and ninety-three south of the river. The percentages that you see there are the percent of people who indicated that particular response. So of course, all of these were the majority, but we thought it was telling that, you know, for example, on ninety-three south of the river, ninety percent of the people noted that, I think it's likely to change quite a bit, there's untapped potential. So that just gave you, gave us, gave, and gives you an understanding of that kind of input, and the degree of input that we got. And then the next slide is the street input, as you can see here, the red is a regional corridor, it's a higher-volume street, moves automobiles pretty quickly, uh, probably has parking lots generally in front of the buildings. That was the area from, that was ninety-three, south of the river, down to ninety-three and forty, the gateway to the community. They designated that as regional corridor. Again, this is a majority of the responses we received. The blue was the community corridor designation, that would be for Wisconsin north of the tracks, and then, um, Spokane south of the tracks down to the river, uh, community corridor, medium to high-volume street, uh, pedestrian or bikes are accommodated, uh, but secondary, mixing of uses, moving automobiles, but not to the same extent as a regional corridor, kind of the definition of community corridor. And then you can see, the yellow is district corridor, and that would be Second Avenue east of Spokane, as well as, uh, Columbia Avenue south of Second Avenue. And so district corridor is really a well-balanced street, accommodates multi, uh, multiple modes of transportation, um, may have on-street parking, um, it's a, uh, and it's not certainly to the volume of a community corridor, or certainly a regional corridor. So those were kind of the six streets that we asked for input on. Um, we took this information and were able to create a street types map, I think it's a little bit, just see here, but we did it on a large poster board, and it's still available. But we took the information that we received from the community input, as well as, um, our analysis and coordination with, uh, city staff, public works, et cetera, to create a street map. We think had four typologies here, we had the regional corridor, the community corridor, the district corridor, that you saw on the slide prior, and then neighborhood streets made up the, the, the vast majority of the remainder of the community. So we were able to create that map and, um, display that for the community last night. You go to the next slide. We also created a place types map, this also came from the input we've received from the community, uh, both in-person and online, in terms of the character that they defined for the areas that each table and those online, uh, examine. Also, uh, based on our assessment of existing conditions and requirements from MLUPA, so we were able to create a place types map that starts to define the character for the entire community within, within city boundaries. So that map is also on display. You know, as we get input on that map, that really does help us to understand character, which ultimately can start to get to a land use map that ultimately leads to zoning districts and so forth. And then, we got stopped. Wait, this. Yeah, I don't know why it keeps taking me back.
Yeah, you know, it keeps changing.
I did, though. Um, I can do it. Uh, and try again, I'll be, just because it was a charge, there's some fair amount of information in the slide. Oh, Steve's got it. Perfect, okay. So, um, you know, one of the things we want to make sure that we do is, um, integrate the land use plan with the housing plan, and certainly the transportation plan. So here you can see the state projections, it's a little bit hard to see on the right-hand side, what this is, is the, uh, Montana Department of Commerce, um, estimates in terms of, uh, population projection and housing projection. You can see at the very bottom right of the slide, um, additional housing units needed by twenty forty-five, based on their estimate, is about twenty-one hundred units. So we know that it's about a thousand units, uh, over the course of a decade, for the next two decades. That is the planning horizon for the twenty forty-five plan. The twenty twenty-five housing needs assessment was, was a ten-year horizon, it was from twenty twenty-four to twenty thirty-four. And in that document, it also noted about a thousand, I think the mid-range was about a thousand units was the need over the course of that decade. It was straight-line projected, with the taking into account the recommendation in the housing needs assessment, which said that about three-quarters of the housing need is going to be for housing, for households earning a hundred and twenty percent of area median income or less, so middle income slightly above, but less, seventy-five percent of the, it gives us an understanding, the bottom left paragraph, that about sixteen hundred of the twenty-one hundred units would ideally serve lower-income or middle-income residents. Um, a, a bit of a hard effort to achieve, uh, based on your market demands, we think. If you go to the next slide, or, so. Um, so with the desire, uh, that we've heard from the community to, uh, certainly get affordable and workforce housing throughout the community, we understand that, that existing zone, just existing zoning, um, and/or infill under existing zoning, a density may not get you to that goal. Right now, with MLUPA, you don't have the opportunity for inclusionary zoning, so you don't have the opportunity to require a percent of the development to de-restrict for lower-income or middle-income housing. So you've got a bit of a challenge as you address the housing need, you really, what we have heard is, you really want to address certainly affordable and workforce housing needs as well. Concerns that, uh, with the additional densities, with market being what it is, strong housing demand, that, um, with the ongoing development, you may see more market-rate housing without interventions in the market, uh, you may see a rise in market-rate housing rather than affordable and workforce housing unless you intervene, it just may come at a faster rate because MLUPA is opening up a bit of a pipeline for housing. So as we look forward, we recognize that government, that there are some tough decisions ahead. Certainly, um, how do we find, how do we, as a community, think about land use and housing, to find opportunities to incentivize workforce housing? You certainly have the, the legacy home program that has worked well for you, certainly the ninety, ninety-three forty project, but if MLUPA requires sixty-foot building heights in the downtown, sixty-foot building heights in your commercial, that takes away some of your incentives to get your home legacy, your, your home legacy home centers, to get affordable housing. So it almost is a bit of a challenge, and it competes against itself. So thinking about other opportunities, other areas that you might have to zone for housing, and provide incentives, whether that's resort sales tax incentives, abatements, et cetera, will be important, we think, moving forward, to move the needle on workforce and affordable housing. Certainly, there is, there's got to be this, this balancing of scales between protecting character and getting the kind of housing that you want, so that you have full housing, a full housing ladder, full housing typology, and a complete community.
Well, you turned off, so you turned off the participant navigation, so you might have to control it again. Yeah, hold on, control it. This presenter has turned it off, I don't know if he did.
Oh, thank you, Alan. That's good, we can forward it.
We've been close to the end, lucky for you.
Can we take any, uh, questions or comments up to this point? And then you can wrap up.
The only thing I would say is, if you don't mind, uh, the only other slide that we really had, that was, I think important is that we, um, you know, our ask of the community last night was to really help us understand where and how to grow. And so we had some poster boards, uh, for those of you that participated, some poster boards and some input, and so that was the information that we received last night. You had asked, or a, a person online had asked, um, about, um, a virtual meeting, a virtual opportunity, we are going to set that up, so that there is that opportunity. And also, um, some people have asked about the boards that were presented last night, we'll also get those up on the Engage Whitefish site as well. We'll have access to see those.
With all those sticky notes on those boards last night, how are you going to incorporate each one, or?
So we photographed every sticky note and every board, so we've got all of that documented, and so we've got that information from the physical meeting, and then we'll certainly take the, um, uh, the online input as well. And if you have any questions, we are happy to answer, all three of, uh, my colleagues are here as well, and I'm happy to answer any questions or discuss anything.
So anybody from the community can ask questions, we're going to cap this at about ten minutes, just because we still have so much to go through, but if somebody from the board or the community has a question for these consultants, go ahead now. Go ahead, Richard.
You can just talk.
Or can I say, talk?
You can just ask.
Uh, one of those slides, um, do you look, it has the, the streets.
One of those slides, you look, it has the streets that has ninety-three from forty to the bridge, and then it gets down to Second Street and changes. But then there's nothing to the left as it goes west on Second slash ninety-three.
This one, this one?
No, it's.
There's the one with the yellow.
Right, let's go back. Right there. So you have the red lines, the blue line, but then nothing goes west.
This was the online survey that we asked, and these were the only six sections, six sections that we asked for input on. We were trying to respect people's time online.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
Any other questions or comments on this presentation? So you guys will let us know as you have virtual things set up, and then Alan will let us know as things are posted from these sessions, right? Are you?
Are you subscribed to the website?
For sure.
That's.
Yeah.
If you're not getting a list of the website and just try, and there's something wrong. But that's how I've been primarily communicating with everybody.
Wait, can I make a comment? Okay, yes. So I just had a question for the consultants. So, you know, being engaged in this process, you know, we've heard a lot about how growth since COVID has been very dramatic, and there's a lot of pushback against big apartment buildings and radical change. And so my question, kind of around last night, and what's the scenarios that were laid out, the only scenarios that I saw were, tended to be the outskirts of town, tended to be places that are more rural right now. And any of those, any of those options kind of create radical change in those areas. And I just have a question on why there wasn't a scenario three, in which we looked at how could density be displaced throughout the entire community? And to nerd out on housing, I just wanted to read a quote to kind of get my point across, and then you can answer my question. Because I just think that a lot of times, you know, we don't know what we don't know. So this is a book called Escaping the Housing Trap: The Strong Town's Response to the Housing Crisis. For cities to evolve and adapt, we must allow neighborhoods to change, all neighborhoods, no exception. As we take radical neighborhood transformation off the table, we need to bring back the expectation that all neighborhoods are a work in progress, changing and adapting on a continuum of improvement. So that's just kind of my question in response, because I think that the instinct is, is that change is really scary in my neighborhood. But what will the results be if we grow on the edge of town? And how will that impact kind of all those other moving pieces?
Yeah, no, that's a great question. So I would say that last night, we had three large areas within the city's boundary, and then I think there were six on the outskirts of the community that we asked about. We were a little bit surprised that more people didn't select that. I don't think we should expand beyond the city's boundary on the outside board. We were surprised by that a little bit. But with that being said, we recognize that you currently allow for infill, gentle infill in the community right now, because a single-family lot allows for a two-unit development right now. So certainly there's that opportunity. As we looked at the place types, and if you have an opportunity to look at that map, which is still here, I think that you'll see that some of the place-type character descriptions in some of the areas that are nodes, almost like little commercial nodes, but also have residential around them, we have identified those as mixed neighborhood, which allows for more than just a, say, duplex. So you could get a fourplex. Maybe there's a house that gets, could get converted into a four, a single, a large, single-family house that could become a fourplex. Maybe there's an opportunity for a six or a tenplex, right? Respecting the character of the neighborhood is the most important thing when we look at place types, not necessarily the density. So we've got allowances built in to those place types right now. So really, I think it would be helpful if people took a look at those, because most are compact suburban, allows for townhouses, allows for small multifamily units. And then even the next level up, the mixed neighborhood allows for more than that. So we've got, we've got a character built in. As long as you maintain the character of the neighborhood, the density is not as relevant, right? So that is built in.
Because I just think it's my, we need to be mindful that, you know, a lot of people talk about gentrification, and the way the gentrification happens, right, is it goes to the places where the poorer people live, right? Looking on the map with such a high number of people saying that over by Edgewood in Colorado should expect to change, like they already have so much of the change that we've experienced over the last thirty years. And so I just think that that's just something to think about moving forward.
Yeah, thanks for that. Yeah, definitely look at the place types map. I think it's important to see that kind of character dispersion.
Yeah, when the posters go up, also pay the time to read them. I know there's a lot of text on there from last night. But if you have the time, you know, take the time to read them, because there is some language on there about gentle density, and how all twenty-one hundred of those units are not going to be made up in just those ten areas that we're talking about. There's a thirty percent that would actually be spread across the city throughout the communities.
Go ahead, Toby.
I just, well, I had one comment for you guys. In the presentations, especially these slideshow things, I noticed that when you have a map, the map is like one-third of the frame, and text is two-thirds of the frame. So no one can really see what's going on in the map. It would really be nice if, especially since you're verbally presenting the program, to talk about it with, you know, font size six, rather than fourteen or twenty or something like that, because we're really interested in the map. What, where are you talking about, you know? And that's just a suggestion to future things, and like when you post this online, are we going to get the same thing? Big text here?
Full-size of the posters.
And the posters are going to go up. Yeah, you don't have the ability to zoom. Yeah, it's hard on a lot of power, but we could, I guess we could start to chunk it, but that's.
Just one of my comments, because the mapping and everything, it's like, well, where is this? Geez, that's so small, I can't tell where it is.
Thank you.
Let's thank you.
And then we've been encouraged to talk to you guys about when you'll be here in December, so we can set our meeting dates. Are you around after this meeting for us to speak with you? Or do you want to let us know right now when you may potentially be here in December, so that our public also has an opportunity to know? Meetings that we'll set in December that you guys could join. Right now, we don't have meetings on the schedule. We've just voted to meet every first Wednesday of the month, and then also every third Wednesday of the month. So those are two times that are set, and we'll see if they can join us on one of those, or if we need to add a third meeting or replace one.
We talked, well, we're in December, though. We're in the process of finalizing them. But the December, we are pushing that to January, and get through the holidays. And we know that, especially in the middle of the month, it's really difficult for people to schedule meetings.
Second week of January, so.
So no December with you guys. No Christmas with you, no Hanukkah with you, just, okay. Well, happy holidays now then.
We're all kind of flipping those.
It's all through the fifteenth, they're going to be back here. January.
Yeah, in January.
Okay. All through the fifteenth, they're going to be back here. We, if I believe correctly, sorry for speaking out of turn. If I believe correctly, the fifteenth, the fifteenth, there's going to be some kind of three-open house on the fourteenth. We don't know what that's going to look like yet of January. On the fifteenth is your regular meeting. They're going to be there, and also keep in mind that the Whitefish High School is going to be doing their yearly presentation to you as well. So probably five o'clock, maybe have a work session, have them present at five o'clock.
Okay. On the fourteenth? Sorry, on the fourteenth?
On the fifteenth. The fourteenth, we didn't schedule, if I remember correctly, and look at this, we didn't schedule a work session. There's going to be another open house.
Yeah, and the work session is following, the twenty-first, I think.
Yeah, sorry, yeah, on the twenty-first. I know, it was wonky. On the twenty-first, we tentatively have, tentatively have scheduled a work session. So what, because we just met, so.
Because the first is not a third day, so it makes that happen.
Yeah. Makes it work.
So December, we have no time.
So December seventeenth, right now, I have a work session scheduled.
And December.
That's going to be the, that's going to be the housing element. And the reason why is because it's not off of public review, yet the housing committee has it, and they're working on it on the first, and on the eighth. They're having their own work sessions internally, the housing committee. And when the housing committee is done with it, hopefully before the eighth, then we will release it for public review, and it's going to be a real quick turnaround, and then you're going to get it December seventeenth. So you have, you have December seventeenth, and if necessary, December, well, I think we said, you're going to hate us on this one, December seventeenth, and then potentially December twenty-ninth, which is a Monday. Because, because the next Wednesday is Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve, and nobody wants to have anything at all to do with Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve.
We'll look at December third and December seventeenth. I want us to keep as much to our first Wednesday, third Wednesday, as we can, and then any person that has to be gone is that, but the board is.
And you just don't have the housing element on the, probably will not have the housing element on the third. Has not been released, will have not been released, probably reviewed.
Okay, so we have nothing to review December third. With, with the growth policy.
Dare enough to say that.
Yeah.
The housing element will not be ready. It will not have been, it will have been, the housing committee will have met on the first, and maybe we can get it out for public review, but you will, it will have nothing, just be in the middle of that process.
Right, so we'll work on that at the end of the.
So the twenty-ninth is the best possible day, unless you want to be on Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve.
At your house, Alan.
At my house. I have new Christmas lights.
Now, I just wanted to finalize with you guys here, if you are here in December, but happy holidays.
But January fourteenth, January fourteenth is an open house. January fifteenth, we have scheduled for you. January twenty-eighth, we have as a work session.
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first.
Sorry, sorry, yes, twenty-first and the twenty-eighth, because that will come in the line to us.
I think we need to let the consultants confirm that those dates are going to work with them, and that if we're trying to meet with council, it's not a council reading week. So tentative for that fourteenth, fifteenth timeframe until we get a holiday, but we can at least put it on there with an asterisk or something that says tentative.
Save the date.
Yeah, yeah. I just, if we're going to have, we're going to have to give a primary call, especially we need to bring your neighbor council.
All right, thank you, guys, very much. We'll see you in January. Yeah, go ahead. Okay, go ahead.
Maybe some other people.
I'm releasing you early. Wait, go ahead.
From all the present, I was there Monday, was there last night, and then again tonight. We've noted that getting our affordable housing in the, the numbers we all require, I don't think there's anybody in this town that doesn't recognize the need for affordable housing. And that was the justification, at least that I heard, put forth for the passage of MLUPA, right? And now we have these goals and requirements that are statutorily imposed. This looks like there's a big gap between what, what we need, what we're required to do, and our ability to make it happen by the loss of many of the tools that we would need. How are we supposed to fill that gap? I mean, you had mentioned a couple of things, abatements or other things. Alan?
Man, I can answer it, because I just said housing element, unless you want to answer.
No, in the line is, sorry.
The only reason I'm raising my hand is because I just finished the housing element, and that's draft to the committee right now. I can tell you the strategies that are being discussed in the housing element. But you're absolutely right. Here, here's, I'm going to make my assessment, okay? Because I've done the numbers, I've run the GIS, I know how many housing units we have. And I'll, and I can, and I'll scout behind that data, right? I can give you the numbers. I know that we have a lot more housing units than the state originally says we have. State says we have five thousand, we have fifty-eight hundred, I can show you where they are. So we have more housing units than the state said we have. I know that we have been building the number of housing units every year that we're supposed to build. If you look at what our housing needs assessment says, it says that we're supposed to be building a hundred to a hundred and fifty a year. We're building. So I, the issue has been exactly what Mr. Worcester said, is it is that we're building the, the, it, I understand that there's a quantity issue, for those of you that believe, you know, we need to be building more housing in the free market and all that. There's a quantity issue. My opinion is that's a lesser of an issue. The problem is the affordability. And, and, and what's been, the tools that we had have been taken away from us. One of the things we have to do in the housing element is identify what our constraints are to the housing. And after I spent months working on this housing element, my determination has been that much, the biggest constraint to housing has been what's been taken away from us. So we do have a few. We have, we can look at the reallocation of our resort tax. There's, there's, you know, we're going to have to decide what we want to give up. And there are some things that we could, that the city can give up, just depends on if the city's willing to. So there is, there is that.
I'm sorry, so that would be an incentive to developers from the asset tax?
So in order, so, so building, building units, we're doing it. Building the units. We could double the units, but my opinion is definitely the building of the units is not going to make them cheaper. Because people were, and maybe Thomas will just say, will, will, will give you some incentive, but people are snatching them up as fast as we're building them. We have to have some stopgap measure in place, more financial incentives or other kinds of incentives. So first of all, there's the resort tax. There's, there's, there's still, there's a lot of money there. We just have to decide what we want to give up. There is also, we have the ability to sponsor through the Housing and Urban Development, Community Development Black Grants, where we can offer money to developers, where we can land bank. There's different incentives monetarily that we have, where we can say, Mr. Developer, if you build this, we're going to give you X amount of money, whether, you know, if it's the will there, and are we going to do it, I don't know. So that's kind of some of the stuff the housing element is saying, is here are our strategies. But they're actually, they're not really build more. They are looking at the zoning, because, you know, with what, with what Mallie talked about, you know, there's a lot of, if you're going to see maps in there, you will eventually see some maps that shows where all our housing is being built right now, where is it existing? They want an inventory, they got an inventory. I did a GIS that shows you what types of housing is built in the city, and the zoning allows those houses. There is more areas we can open up for more types of housing, a better diversity. Did I answer your question?
Well, maybe not the core question, which is how are we going to get there?
So with that, you know, the main strategies I've talked about, maybe you can, so maybe I would just, I could kind of just capitalize and or synthesize what Alan is talking about. And I think it really is thinking about housing and land use integrated, but thinking about it as a toolbox, right? Thinking about opportunities for density, it's a tool. Thinking about opportunities for small lot development, we heard from the housing committee today, that's something they're interested in too, that starts to get you there. Cutting out some of the land use cost starts to get, make a housing a little bit more affordable. There is that, there is an argument for increased density, smaller lot size, right? But I think that as, given the strength of your market, you're going to need to think about, it could be tax abatements, it could be using the resort sales tax, it could be other opportunities for public-private partnerships. I certainly think that land banking now is always a good idea. If you want to think about what we might do with land ten years down the road, it could go into a community housing trust. That starts to take some of the land cost out of the equation. But I think that opportunity to kind of pick and choose more than one tool, because I think you're going to need to actually get the affordability that you want. So I'd say it's a bit of a combined efforts.
And we're going to have to look at our, we can see homes incentives and make them even more incentives. Has the state's taken away some of them, like filling rates, the main reason we've been getting a lot of units? Now the state's saying, you know, we have to go to sixty feet in those commercial buildings, where most of those units are coming in. And so how do we incentivize that? Parking gets reduced by the state. That wasn't an incentive. How do we, you know, what other incentives can we come up with? And there isn't a whole lot, but we, you know, we're going to have to figure something out, yeah.
I'm just worried that if we need sixteen hundred, where are they going to come from? When all I see going up everywhere is, we all see luxury condominiums and et cetera. So it's a, it's a concern. I don't hear anybody saying that we've got a solution for that concern. We have tools that we can.
It's going to take a bunch of different things. There's not one magic bullet that's going to solve the issue. You know, some of the rent buy-down thing, you know, that allows you to have affordable units anywhere, that they're not, don't have to be de-restricted, right? That's a tool that Housing Whitefish is using, and you know, our resort tax is going through it right now. It's been very successful, you know, if we can give more money in that fund, I mean, that helps more people than de-restricted housing. So there's, there's tools that are working, but, you know, all of it takes money and figuring out where you get the capital, and I would say for that.
Okay, so. To be detailed, the next, for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. John's going to make a comment, and then we're going to go ahead and close this discussion, because we'll definitely talk to you guys much more about this again. A question, a comment, go ahead, John.
Okay, so a question for Tom. Are you including in your analysis smaller and smaller square foot apartments or housing units? So that market rate? Uh, so that m- uh, market rate, uh, rentals can be under a thousand a month stay uh, for maybe a four or five hundred square foot unit? Um, there are, there seems to me to be a great demand for that. We have some. Obviously, those are existing, they penciled out in some way or another. I'd love to see more analysis of that.
So we will have, we we have done and we will do some analysis and, uh, look at what the benefit of the smaller units are, because we do believe that smaller units are beneficial, right? Um, we, we are, you know, coordinating our effort with the housing, housing element effort as well. It's probably looking at some of that in more detail, but we certainly do believe that smaller units, um, do offer a a degree of affordability. You know, we were looking at, um, some of the prices, I think it was down at Alta Vista, I think it was, uh, down on the south side. Um, but you know, even some of those units at twelve hundred square feet, they still coming in at four sixty five, four eighty five thousand. It's still, as you know, they're relatively small units, they're not various, they're not incredibly, they're not under a thousand, but they're starting to get smaller, but still maintaining relatively high prices. So, yeah, you 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 can start to get some of the way there with the smaller units, you won't probably get all of the way there.
Okay, but and over by Iowa Avenue, there are several large buildings which have rather small apartments. Can you get really good detailed data on how big those are and how much they're renting for so that we know what the alternative might be and following the market?
Yeah, our our underst- we would be able to get some of that through, you know, some of the M L S and post our data that we have. But certainly a lot of that will be coming out of, I think, the housing plan, which, yeah, we can start to dig into that to get an understanding. Yeah. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
All right.
Good for that.
What's that?
That was good for that.
Thank you, guys. Yeah, we still have.
Remember, we love large maps.
Great.
Large maps.
Large maps coming your way.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. So, um, this is probably a good time to take just a couple minute break before we head into the second, this last portion of this, um, which will be our discussion of transportation element. Um, and then we'll set up, we'll have our last general public comment, so anyone who wants to to comment, um, can. And at that point, the transportation discussion is closed, so if you have something that you really want to say, um, you can say it at that point. Dana, do you disagree with that at all? That anyone who has a comment that relates to transportation after our discussion and our direction to staff is given, they can give it at that point because the discussion is over then. Does that make sense? Yeah, so just in the sake of fairness, since we close public discussion, we will have our board discussion. And then if there's something that online or here in the audience you'd like to say, that includes general public comment or transportation, please do so then. So it's seven twenty one now and we'll just take five minutes and then come right back. And, um, in front of steady council. So we are now on the transportation draft and we have all of our public comments that we reviewed from last time. So, um, we'll start, we'll start with the, um, the goals and objectives unless anyone has anything pressing on the opening statement or the introduction that they would like to bring up.
Now, I'll have him up here so you can watch in real time.
Thank you.
Let me know if I miss a thing.
And Alan, let us know, because there are several things that we will find in goals and objectives that are mentioned multiple times and then also throughout the body. So is it better for you if we discuss the first time, decide and then know that that's referenced later and give direction to you to change it throughout the body of the document if it's something pretty specific that you can find and search and do, um, and then we'll just kind of red flag it?
There's a goal, I think somebody's discussed throughout the document for consistency, then if you change a goal, then I'll change the document wherever that narrative.
Reappeared.
Supporting that goal is that helps me that we don't have to go word searching through it. There has to be some trust that I'm gonna do.
Yeah, and I think that's the only way for us to move through the document.
objectives are supported by the narrative. The narrative is the research, so there's some somewhere, there's something tied into the text.
Okay. So as we go through the goals and objectives, we'll know that these things appear later in another goal and objective, in the land use, in the housing, multiple places, we'll make the change here in real time and then Alan will look through the document to make the change reflect. And then as we review that draft later, we can all make sure that it's what we wanted and intended it to reflect. All right, so goal number one, um, this is continue to develop a safe, balanced and well-integrated multimodal transportation system, um. I know that we have, we discussed this a little bit last time after the discussion, um, and then pretty quickly decided it was late. So does anyone have comments or suggestions on the goal itself or the narrative just after?
Ma- Madam Chair?
Yes.
I know that you haven't, I'm sorry, um.
It's okay.
I wanted confirmation, cause you had asked me to do a different format.
Mm-hmm.
And all of the plan elements have been have been retrofitted to this, is this.
Thank you.
Understand this, you're okay with the general, I don't want to talk about the goal, but the format, the way you set up, the new way. Is that what you wanted?
Every, everyone.
It is, cause that's the way I've been formatting everything.
Yes.
Everyone's in agreement?
Cause I've been asked about that, so I went back and reformat it and hopefully we were right.
I think we're, you'll hear from us if we're unhappy, we're happy. Thank you, Alan. All right. Any comments or suggestions on the goal itself before we get into the objectives here? Okay, so moving on, objectives, A, um, through J, as it stands now, go ahead.
I did comment on the text after the goal.
Okay.
Um, about halfway down, it says compromised in areas. Can you find that, Alan? I would say certain area. Compromis- compromised in areas didn't sound right to me.
Sure. Keep an eye on white screen there, make sure I'm getting everything right.
Okay. So compromised.
Clarify it.
Yes.
We put nothing on that document until we all vote and say we want it on. Man, so I just wanna, let's not get carried away, so that anybody has any.
Thank you.
That makes sense, yeah, okay.
So everyone in agreement with certain being added? Yes? Any opposed? No? Okay, thank you, John. All right. And moving on to objectives with this.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I I made a note to myself on this, that one of the public comments said that they would urge the Community Development Board to add an objective under goal one that specifically mentions mobility and accessibility for people of all ages and ability. I didn't see that in there and I was wondering if we would care to add such a, such a objective.
So I know that that does appear later on and I don't see, um, any reason to not add it here, but we would have to have a specific wording and a place to put that. So, go ahead, Alan.
I don't know when to raise my hand and then to talk. Um, I mean, it seems like if that's the direction, maybe objective A would be in place to put it, right? Just give me the word. It's something the policy to say, what's your support non-active transportation for?
All ages and abilities.
For all ages and abilities.
Yes, that's, I think that that proves it, covers it.
So, again, keep, twice the bouncing ball, make sure I'm getting it right.
For all ages and abilities.
Yeah.
What else do you?
We're, that, that, Madam Chair, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Um, it's, it's limited by the word non-motorized. Um, I mean, I, if you're talking about a motorized wheelchair or, I mean, I I don't, we've got the e-bike issue. Um, uh, I see a lot of folks that are driving these trikes, powered trikes.
Take the word.
Order in the goal, and the good goal. First goal, continue to develop the safe, balanced and well-integrated multi-million transportation system for all, what was it?
All age and ability.
That would then apply to.
Yeah.
Any of the transportation goals. If you agree with that, does that make sense?
I do, I think that will work.
All Asian, all, what did I say? For all ages and abilities. So I'm putting it into the general goal that would apply to all five of the transportation systems.
And then delete. To your point, but that word non-motorized, I think that's something you guys need to discuss.
Yeah.
And then I would suggest taking that, non-motorized.
Or just, just active transportation.
So let's go back to what you added at the beginning of the goal, Alan, and we'll all agree to that or not. So to add for all ages and abilities, everyone agrees, say, raise your hand, say. All right, no one disagrees? Phil, do you agree with that?
Yes.
Yes, okay. All right, that stays. And then the removal of non-motorized is what we're talking about now and objective A.
And then just take this away. Yeah. That's, that's, it's the same thing, not, so I, sure.
Active transportation, yes.
I don't know if we defined it anywhere, but that's how it's defined, all types of.
We we do define active transportation, I probably should have. In fact, that might be a little left over, because we have, we have historically called it motorized and non-motorized and we really now call it active. We call it the road transportation and the active transportation network, so we don't really use that term anymore, so it was a mess.
All right, so everyone agreeing to take non-motorized out of A, yes, all right. Thank you. And, okay. Yes, John?
Sounds like we should define active transportation, cause I don't know.
So I think it is defined in the text later.
The whole, the whole narrative, actually, the entire, if you look on page, um, okay, there's an entire section on it.
Yeah.
All right, it is, it's, it's, and I took that, it's in a two days, twenty two transportation line. So I actually took that, I wanted everything to be consistent, so there's a whole section on it.
Okay, it was about those human power, so.
Um, but I will.
Do I have human power? Oh, I said human power.
So I will say this may be a good spot for us to discuss e-bikes. Um, now, since we're talking about motorized non, how do we talk about active? Um, if we're going to define active as non-motorized and take out non-motorized, there'll be several places through here that we're gonna have to figure out what that pertains to.
Would act or also mean, uh.
Non-motorized.
Consider as though active is not dormant.
This is.
End up.
We have a definition.
Just says active transport refers to any form of humor, human power travels such as walking, biking or using a wheelchair. Um, but some of those, like a wheelchair could be electric.
All right, so it doesn't really, it's motorized, it's human powered. And we include a wheelchair, but it doesn't say.
What page is it?
Uh, is, what page number?
It is on page, um.
Eleven.
But at the top left one.
Under the table.
Yeah. And I have that.
So, top of page eleven is the first discussion on the active transportation network, starting on page eleven.
And it is good to go back and forth between there, because each one of these objectives is tied into a narrative.
Mm-hmm.
And so we gotta make sure that we're consistent back and forth. I mean, that's
Yeah.
The thing that we, you know, when we're going through the consistency check, all right, is this goal talked about, how it's talked about, through every goal and objective. That's one of the things I do, what I usually do, is to make sure all of it's tied into.
Since you're on that section, there's a, there's a red mark on there that I added and it's red marked and all it is, is a reference to see the park section of the public facility, it's the discussion of the Whitefish Trail, cause there's been discussion about that and I wanna make sure that there was a reference that the Whitefish Trail not being discussed in this, cause it's not active transportation, it's recreation.
Okay, and that was Heidi's.
Yeah, but it was a very fair comment, there's been so much confusion, cause we separated the Whitefish Trail, because most people don't use that as active transportation, that's a recreational amenity, but we did not want our active transportation network to be called a recreational amenity. We wanted it to be transportation, but, so that, so there's a reference, that's the only thing that red marks that. What you know.
I think everyone, uh, does everyone agree with that reference that Alan has added? Okay, thank you, all right. Okay, so, um, I still think at some point we're gonna have to deal with defining where e-bike goes and how it's, it's into this, if we're going to define active transportation and take out non-motorized. Okay.
Just cause I think as the future goes on, I mean, there's laws are changing constantly with regard to e-bikes, where they're allowed, there's, you know, three different types of e-bikes, there's kind of their electric assist, you know, that as you get older, they help you climb hills, but you may wanna still get your exercise and there's fully powered ones, more like a motorcycle. And as those things get defined, you know, the federal government's struggling with where they allow those things, the state's struggling with how they allow those things. That stuff's gonna change and so I think it's probably best if we leave that kind of open and generic, you know, so it's not limiting something as things change and, you know, federal level, state level. Um, but so under that page eleven, it talks about the active transportation refers to any form and it says human powered, maybe we should just say non-vehicle based transportation. So you're not talking, you're basically saying it's not, we're not talking about cars that we're talking about. And then it says such as walking, biking or using a wheelchair, which leaves it open enough that as things change, we're not limiting, you know, however.
That's clarified, kind of a confusion that I had.
Can you, say it again, where's page eleven on the?
I'm, where am I screening? Where do you want me at it?
For that first sentence.
Okay.
That fits in for any form, instead of saying human powered, now we'll just say non-vehicle based, so vehicle slash based.
So bike is not considered a vehicle?
No.
So they're a bike and vehicle?
Well, I don't know how you'd say it, motor vehicle or.
I mean, it's a
Wheel.
Motor vehicle based. Um, I think of a vehicle as something that you're inside of this contained, but I don't.
You own a bike.
Yeah, is that, the police define that as a vehicle? I don't know, maybe, the motorcycle vehicle, maybe.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've struggled with this, reading through it and.
I just throwing that out there as a way to go, I mean, you guys can assign it to something.
And there's all kinds of electrical stuff now, you've got the skateboards, you've got the.
Yep, the wheel, the wheel.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, non-motorized is.
That's motor.
Yeah, so.
It is, however, bike has a motor.
Mm-hmm, so this is kind of where we are. I had an idea to add a goal or to add an objective under this goal. Um, K, promote safety for pedestrians where e-bike use is allowed, cause that can be changing. And encourage only non-motorized use on active transport trails. Okay, that would be K, um, well, I just.
Sporing opportunities to improve connectivity in existing neighborhoods without why it's battery propelled.
On one.
Word, I'm sorry, wait here.
Sorry. Just as a last.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, wherever that falls, J K.
Let me get it down one more time. Cause you know, when people are watching you, you never type fast.
Yeah.
Okay, say that again for me, please.
Promote safety for pedestrians where e-bike use is allowed and encourage only non-motorized use on active transport trails.
Last part, one more time, the last second half. Where e-bike use is allowed.
Where e-bike use is allowed and encourage only non-motorized use on active transport trails.
Okay.
Can I make slight modification to that?
Yes, so let him type that.
About electronic bike. You better spell that out, electric bike.
Ele- really e-bike. Electric transportation.
Yes.
Cause there are electric scooters, there's the wheel that you ride, there's a bunch of them.
Electric transportation, okay. Yeah.
Yeah, whatever you said, just put electric rather than bikes, the big bike.
Yeah, I'm just curious how that's gonna play out, like, um, cause we don't have a lot of bike lanes and so the trails around town, right by Baker Park and on to like City Beach, like, are we saying that no e-bikes or anything electronic like that are not allowed? Is that kind of what you're saying?
Well, so what I'm saying is promote safety for pedestrians where it is allowed and encourage only non-motorized use on active transport trails. So if it's called an active transport trail, then that's something that if it, if an electric vehicle, vehicle, electric mode of transport is allowed there, then we're just promoting safety for pedestrians around that. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so I'm just wondering if on the active, uh, trail aspect, just like clarifying, like where it, where e-bikes are not allowed.
Um, and some of those are, sees that the Parks Department puts together. And some of those are, sees that the Parks Department puts together.
Yeah.
Route might be better, cause trails.
Yeah.
Cause, cause, is a, is a, um, a, is a cycle track a trail? It's, it's a, it's a route, you know, when you put the bollards on the road, that's not a trail.
Mm-hmm, yeah, cause.
Routes versus trails, like, like this.
My manager.
Yes.
I share Valerie's concern, at least in terms of confusion about this multimodal thing as shared use, right?
Yeah, shared use.
And so. I, I'm confused in relation to that, about what would and would not be restricted under your wording.
I'm confused as well, thank you. I just wanted something, um, as a placeholder, and I'm not sure how to word it, because I'm unclear as to the definitions of these. Electric vehicles, bikes, scooters, Angie, yes, please, help us, thank you.
So we are, just so you guys know, we are, we are confused too, because they thought is, I mean, it's. They have like sixty-one definitions, right? We are working. Slowly but surely, on a new ordinance, um, addressing what Marie just said. We call personal mobility devices. So, you know, right?
Not bad.
My apologies.
So just so you guys, I, I just want us to be aware that we are working on that ordinance.
Okay.
So I think, like, saying promote, you know, safety for pedestrians. Where electric transportation is allowed is fine. Goal, but I wouldn't get any more specific on that, just in case it conflicts with what the ultimate in the document is.
Mm-hmm.
Does that make sense?
It does make sense, yeah, so just take off the last part of that, I just want something that says we want to protect people. Where it is allowed, but shared. Oh, okay, so is everyone agreeing with that, raise your hand?
And then just going back to that, I just looked up some stuff on, you know, incorporating like. Personal mobility devices into active transportation definitions, and it talks about. Um. Defining a, active transportation broadly to include all forms of human-scale trail, people of all ages and disabilities.
Mm-hmm.
And it said, maybe from any kind of humor, human-powered or low-speed electronic-assist transportation. So maybe we add that, like, the low-speed electronic-assist.
Then we define low speed.
I mean.
Under twenty miles an hour.
Go that deep, but I mean, it.
Okay.
Cause this is a hundred-foot document, it comes down to what the laws are, but.
Yeah, thank you for that, I'm happy with what we have. As a placeholder, and then if there's.
This is talking about the, the paragraph, goes back to that, what, how we define active transportation.
Okay.
Yeah, this thing that you just did.
Yeah, so we should look at that once we get to, well, unless, yeah, we do have.
Start thinking about that.
We do have active, we just took out non-motorized, and we have an objective A, active transportation. Um, and I. My question right now, as we trudge through this. Will we have the opportunity to create a glossary or be part of that? Um, and something with definitions. Thank you, Alan, for answering.
Um, yes. I don't know. Right now, I'm trying to get done what we're trying to get done.
For sure.
There, I guess the, the answer I'm gonna give you is yes. Um, we're working on the text version right now to meet our statutory requirements. Um. For those of you that are looking forward to a mysterious career in the planning commission here, where's gonna be another part to this?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think we can work on glossaries and definitions, we're gonna summarize this into a user-friendly. Um, I haven't set that up as part of this process.
Okay, it just comes up pretty often from public comment, we get, how do you define this? Because maybe I have an issue with this, and maybe I do not, depending on how we're defining that, and usually it's, this is.
Yes, you're not gonna have it by January.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Okay. Yes.
And then. Alan, could some things like a glossary? And, um, index, whatever, could that be done after May?
That, that's what I'm saying, yes, that, that's exactly it, you're, you're not gonna have that by January when you see it. We're getting the text version of all the policy goals in there done, then we're gonna start working on, cause we have a two-hundred-page document. You, you haven't seen it yet, but that's what you've got. Um, then what we're gonna do is, I'm hoping we're gonna separate it, and you're gonna have a goals and objective, basic overview document. And then you're gonna have a narrative document with all the research, and probably the glossary and all that stuff can be in that first document, kind of a, the. Guide, I, I always, I keep saying whiteface for dummies, cause that's what it's gonna be, and then there's. All this narrative, and that's your research and your background, you know, does that make sense? And that second, whiteface for dummies, is gonna be when we're really gonna package it up and pretty and all that stuff.
Okay.
It will happen, you're not gonna have, I, unless Dana gives me direction, I'm not gonna have a glossary done by, by Ja- January, cause I'm, cause that's a big task to do.
Okay, Toby.
I just have a, a comment, perhaps a suggestion. Is that when. Certain phrases and terms come up. Maybe you could create a little file off to the side, that you just say, active. To be defined.
Some of these terms are generally defined.
Yeah.
Other places, but, you know, just explaining them in the background.
What is non-motorized?
There's too many, I mean.
And it was like, we're not gonna define close proximity, but in context, it's nice to know that. We have an idea of what we're doing, yeah.
I, yes, we, dude, always plan a glossary, I just not gonna have it done.
And this is a regulatory document, it's a. View, so it can be more.
But there generally are certain terms that describe that.
Alright, so, uh, anything else on? Objectives for goal one? That anyone has to offer? Okay. Alright, go ahead.
H says, uh, connections to existing hot pass and sidewalk along East Edgewood Drive.
Mm-hmm.
Did the city pay for paths that cross county land? Somehow by cooperation with the county?
So. Let me answer that, sorry. Let me answer that.
Work with.
We originally, we were particularly talking about looking at Edgewood. Um, and I talked to Craig about that, and originally, we, we were talking about trying to just look at annexing Edgewood. Then there was a discussion about, well, we don't know if we wanna, eh, annex Edgewood. Um, let's look at saying we're gonna work with the county. But then I got an email from the county, saying, we're not gonna work with you if you want it, you need to annex it. Basically. That's what they said. That's, that's in your, if you look in your, in your. Comments, Ryan County says, we're not gonna work with you if you want it taken. So you could, so, the original goal here was the city should consider annexing East, as, but it didn't, that didn't end up. Yeah.
Does that answer your question?
So, they're not gonna work with us. They just want us to take it if they want.
Alright, so. We will move on. Is everyone happy with? Goal one and the objectives as listed and amended tonight? Okay, so we're moving on to goal two. Um. The goal itself, and then also the objectives.
I guess before you finish your.
Go ahead.
Quick, come. Goal one. Um. Where it says gives equal preference to and enhances mobility for all modes of transportation. That's one of the things that was called out in Marie Flowers' letter, as an example of something, and. Um. I'm not sure that I understand exactly what the equal preference means. Um. If you've got. Multi-use trail, sorry, multi-use. Um. What are we calling it?
Shared use path.
Shared use path, thank you. A side, one-sided road, right, and it's, it's the middle of winter, you know, mid-January. Um, where that path is gonna see a whole lot less use than it is in summer. Um, and the, um. The traffic problems we have with congestion. Um, what? What do you mean by equal preference?
Let me tell it, Craig, I'm into that. I mean, I think it was just, it was, it was resounding when I did the, the visioning, that they do not want us prioritizing the car over other. That's what I've been told, that was the, that was, that was one of the highest priorities of this, of everybody's set. So I think that's the intent of that, if, if you think there's a better way to write that. Fine, um, the intent was that, that the citizen said, we want walking to be, we want. We don't want you to have to have a car to live here, and that we believe it's just important to be able to walk and have other modes of transportation on the park. And we don't want the car prioritized, that's what I was told. We were told.
So my understanding of that was encapsulated in the term walkability. Um, and that walkability was, um, like concurrent. Um, uh, shared use. Um, uh, paths. Um, alongside all of our roads. That, that we build that out. Is that?
That's one element, I mean, it's also public transportation, and. I'll never, you're not allowed necessarily your own.
Sure, and it's separating, like, right, like I heard a lot of, we want separate pathways, we don't want them to be sharing corridors, I mean, it's. But the intent of this is just saying, we're not prioritizing the car. That's what the intent of this is. Correct?
I think it's defined in objective I, that talks about the food streets policy.
That would seem to me to be a pretty good. Definition of equal preference, right there. Okay, thank you.
Are, are you making any suggestions, or you're?
No, I think that, that. So that does it for me.
Thank you, Greg.
Can I ask a question real quick?
Yes.
So would this allow, kind of when I think about, um. Kind of like prioritizing all forms of transportation, right now. Um, bike paths and trails are not plowed at the same rate necessarily as like our city roads. And so would, uh, you know, as like kind of a goal objective. Would putting that in here then like create space in the future to kind of talk about how the city? Is plowing some of those spaces, so that people in the winter have more opportunities. To use some of those things that they might not be using right now, partially because they are not prioritized plowing-wise in the same way. I'm just trying to clarify.
I think that gets. Yeah, I see, because by ordinance, the property owner adjacent to a path is responsible for removing the snow. And so I think you'd be pigeonholing the city into. I, I mean, there could be more enforcement.
Okay, like city-owned.
Yeah, oh, sure, I mean, if, if the trail. Multi-use paths, what's up that you deal with? Whereas it's still property owners' responsibility. Well, there's a couple of them that we do do, like. There's a letter that goes out every year by the Parks Department that talks about. Um, the ordinance and what's required, um. I think I was hesitant to talk about. Snow removal, where it conflicts with the way that the city ordinance currently reads.
Okay.
Yeah, you open it.
But this could be a policy that gives opportunity to allow the city funding. To do snow removal at some point on these shared use paths.
I mean, it's a, it's a great point, but the joke wasn't like in Colorado, that in Boulder, the bike paths are clear before the roads are. Right, and it really is in Boulder, um, and that's kind of the intent, is that we should be, if we're not, we should be looking at why. It's Greg's fault.
Yeah, not to pigeonhole us, but to give us an opportunity in the future to say. If we're going to give equal preference, that's all seasons, and we could. Create funding for a gator to zoom through the parks and do that.
Objective maybe to, you know, explore avenues to ensure that, you know, active transportation routes are. You know, clear in the winter. At the same time, or even before, be able to ride or something like that, this, also not very.
Got it, dear?
Yes.
Maybe you could just add word, like, across all seasons in I there, maybe somewhere. As a way. Cause in the summer, you know, you've got debris.
Warrantations throughout all seasons on I.
Projects that address the needs of all transportation users seasonally.
Also.
And all seasons.
It might have to be more specific than that, if it's really good specific.
Angie, is that reasonable to add, in all seasons?
Yeah, yeah.
Alright, everybody agree with that? Thanks, Valerie, that's a good point, snow removal. Alright.
Um, you know, she said we do prioritize snowplowing, plowing and transportation routes.
Way routes, and.
Yeah, I know that, uh, I live out on Wisconsin. That bike path out there is cleared. Regularly, I'm impressed by the fact that it is, like, so I think that the city has prioritized. You know, certainly, uh, bike routes.
Along the highways, and route to school and other boys.
Next. Thank you.
Schools are on the schools, right?
Now we know where we can ride our machines in the winters, yeah, Wisconsin.
Which is a transportation.
Alright, so let's move back on again to number, goal number two. Um, and I think there'll be several of these that we get pulled into different directions and have to go back again, but again, Alan, we give you the. Great pleasure of finding things that we're talking about here, and then incorporating later in the document, if that makes sense. Yeah, cause if we, if we only tonight make it through goals and objectives. Um, unless there are very specific things later in the narrative, then we can feel good about saying this draft. Can go forward as a draft with goals and objectives, knowing those things will carry into the narrative.
So here's the plan of what I've been doing, is, um, when you see the final draft in February.
Mm-hmm.
Um. As you have adopted these sections, I've been putting them together, these are all written to be assembled into one document.
Mm-hmm.
When I've had to go back and make changes, like, like, um, you told me to do the reformatting, so there's sections you've already approved, I've had to go back and do reformatting for the goal and all that stuff. What I've done, and it'll be the same thing I'm doing now, is, um, you know, I'm red-marking it, and then I'm highlighting. And when it's highlighted, then you know that's a section you've not seen, it's a new red mark. That's come back to you after your review, when I've had to fix something.
You have to summarize the goal, because the narrative's way down the bottom.
Right, okay.
So, so when you, the final document, that hundred-and-eighty-page document, you're gonna see, all the red marks are gonna be exactly as you have done it. But I, but the stuff that I've had to do, I will highlight it in yellow, so you can look and say, this is stuff we've not seen yet.
Okay.
So that, so if I have to go back and do some, some monkey around the stuff because of this, I'll highlight it in yellow.
Okay.
Either each of the goals is a new paragraph, right?
Right.
Summarizes what that means, and that's something we have to go back and retrofit in all the chapters. Yeah, but you guys haven't seen those, this is something that you know, we're pulling some of the language out of the background.
All that highlighted in yellow.
Yeah, so that there's some reference, so people kind of understand the man goal, so, you know, not have the thumbs.
Anything that, anything in a, a section that you finished, that's now been added after that fact, I'll highlight it in yellow.
Okay, thank you.
I'm here.
Right.
Uh, uh, I think one thing we should discuss is whether to have a black line. Version of what we adopted.
You'll get both.
Okay.
You'll have a, you'll have a clean, you'll have a clean copy of, of, no red lines. And then you'll have the red marked version with all the yellow highlighted, uh, you'll get two versions. It looks like you got, when you, uh, kind of like what you got, this time when you saw the red mark with staff incorporating all the public comments. It'd be the same thing, there'll be a red mark exactly as you red marked it, with our new stuff in yellow, and there'll be a clean copy with no red marks at all.
Scott.
So in, hopefully, in an effort to save time down the line, one of the comments that I saw dealt extensively with, um. Uh. Self-driving vehicles, right? Um, and it seems like that's a whole thing, I noticed indeed, we've made a, a red line addition for all modes of transportation. And I would be reading that to include and address, in a general sense, all those remarks about self-driving vehicles as well.
Sorry, say that last.
That, so, so you know, that letter came to us on Monday. So so you know, that letter came to us on Monday. Right? The letter about the robots and the autonomous vehicles. I talked to Craig about that. Um, he he believes just our complete streets. Well, I think that's really the only thing. It's a very long letter, but the reality is um they have to read the markings and the pavement. And that's, I think, the the that right, Craig?
Yeah. Yeah, it'll it it essentially will, you know, as we move towards. More robust autonomous vehicle environment. The city's pavement marking policies and procedures are going to have to improve because it's that simple. And the states. Well, yeah, exactly. I mean, any any anybody that maintains pavement markings is gonna have to step up.
So does that answer your question about this or just a?
I was hoping to avoid a whole chunk.
He's agreeing with eleven eleventh hour comment.
Okay. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. And not to disregard that comment, but I'm not sure how to put it in here.
I I don't think there needs, my point is we don't need to do anything. It's there.
Thank you. All right, uh, anything on? Goal two. The first few objectives or the goal itself. Yes.
Oh, I just put a note under objective E. Discourage new significant subdivision development on Big Mountain. Which relies on Haskell Basin Road as presently developed for secondary emergency access. And I know that later on in the document here somewhere, it does point out that Haskell Basin Road is not a liable emergency egress. Doesn't need to be mentioned in here or just.
Road is another story. It's Stolt's private road that goes all the way up there.
Yeah.
That's a county road, Haskell Basin Road, so. Maybe I think it needs to be more broadly defined as that.
How long Haskell Basin Road?
It's a it's a county road, but that ends and then there's this private Stolt's road that goes up to back of Iron Horse. I don't know that it has a name or maybe it's a Forest Service road name or something. It's not Haskell Basin Road up there.
The reason why that's there is because we don't have control of subdivisions and it gives us the ability as a city. If subdivisions are being developed in there, if necessary, we have the ability as a city to send our public comment to the county. With our objections.
It should probably say privately owned forest roads or something rather than Haskell Basin Road because Haskell Basin Road is a long ways from Big Mountain. That's what that was only my point. And I think something I brought up in the comments, it just didn't get addressed in the final draft.
I think we have several things on this E to talk about. Um, is yours on E?
Yes.
Okay.
I would suggest that we.
We're still on E. I'm sorry.
Still on E and we've done nothing yet.
Okay.
Except all get on E. Go ahead. E on goal two.
That we strike significant subdivision and say? Discourage any new development on Big Mountain which relies on Haskell Basin Road.
So I'm more a fan of getting rid of the Haskell Basin Road and keeping discourage new significant subdivision. Leaving it kind of the way it is, but taking out Haskell Basin Road.
Okay, and I may as well put in my other suggestion. Following on Richard's imploring us to do something about this. At I had a second sentence saying Haskell Basin Road is not passable for vehicles, period.
Yeah.
That that's stated later in the document.
I vote we just take out Haskell Basin Road as a as even something.
By the county Haskell Basin Road.
What did?
So the Haskell Basin Road is a county road that's maintained by the county. I think we're talking about the private Stolt's Road. We're calling that because it's up in Haskell Basin, but there is actually a Haskell Basin Road, so.
I'm a little confused. I hiked up there maybe twenty years ago. And I I think I hiked up the Haskell Creek Road. And I'm hearing that maybe there's two of them. So I'm a little confused.
Yeah, I I own property if they want to do it. And uh, my property was on Haskell Creek Road. As you go up Haskell Basin Road that comes to a right turn and then there's an immediately. Two left-hand turn, this Haskell Creek Road. And that goes up and it passes through a Stolt's Research Tree Farm and then continues on up. And my property was the next to the last private property before it turns into. School trust and then it goes to Stolt's Land, I believe that. And I know into Stolt's Land, there was a crossbar. Cause I used to go up there. I own property there. And uh, I was able to walk all the way up to what was then the outpost, which is now the Big Mountain Lodge or the Whitefish Mountain Lodge. But yes, it's a different road. Haskell Creek Road is the one that goes all the way up. Big Haskell Basin Road does not go anywhere near the Big Mountain.
So.
Yeah, Haskell Creek Road, I think is what I walked up.
I'm not sure if it's called that.
So maybe you should call it.
I want to propose language to take out um Haskell Basin Road completely. And leave discourage new significant subdivision development on Big Mountain. Which relies on a secondary emergency access. So.
Well, I mean.
Any secondary.
The access was created that was unimproved and paved. Why would you still?
Yeah.
Well, having a second, so yeah.
Then the growth laws. Without. Without.
Without a secondary.
Unimproved secondary access roads or privately owned. Unimproved because that's really what the issue is. It's not a public road. We have no mechanism to improve a privately owned road owned by.
So then there is no secondary emergency access though at all. It doesn't matter if it's.
Big Mountain expanded their thing. That was something the county used as a if there's potentially a secondary access road that they, you know, proved some of the development something. So why we have subdivision there is that's the mechanism where you're looking at is not have access to things like that. Something they use by right. The county doesn't have building permits, so they build whatever you want. So I mean, that's the one mechanism that gets, you know, some kind of a public review in the county. You know, once we annex it, we might have more say about what happens, but.
But we're saying.
Unimproved second privately owned.
On our part, discourage new significant subdivision development. We don't mean. But we mean that we. Yes. Oh, wait, no, let me read it. Relies on privately owned.
Unimproved, sorry.
Unimproved secondary.
Privately owned or just unimproved?
I would almost say. Secondary emergency access that does not meet city road standards or something like that.
Something like that makes sense.
Travel road is still considered an improved road. But city standards require. Let's drive it to ten foot maintain gravel road. So that's what.
That works.
Cause the idea is emergency access, right?
I mean, or. I mean, we shouldn't also do this does not meet city or county.
In an emergency, doesn't it have to be like two?
Yeah, only because again, if somebody's like. Not on his per view, it's just a county road. It gives us the ability to protest there.
Okay, so. And then I have a second sentence. Once we say yes or no to this. But a second sentence that would be part of this. And it may be what John was thinking too.
Manager.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, I I have a further comment on the problem of the secondary emergency access. So I was looking at the two thousand eighteen Wisconsin Avenue Corridor Plan. And it says at page two dash eighteen. Big Mountain Road provides the only general access for the Whitefish Mountain Resort as well as the many residential subdivisions on Big Mountain. Allowances for secondary emergency access, mainly egress, are in place. And should accommodate potential emergency situations. Well, that sounds wrong to me and I think we should make it very clear that there is no secondary emergency access. Sure. Tell me how to do it. I I'm not arguing with the Wisconsin plan. That's why I'm trying to work on this one, but sure. I mean, there are several places in this stack in this section where you deal with that that issue, right? Not just in this one. I think I meant. And you struggled with it.
Yeah, I think this covers that. I don't really throw this, but.
So it supersedes the two thousand eighteen.
Yeah.
Yes.
Earlier, I suggested saying Haskell Basin Road is not passable for vehicles. We want to be broader than that. So how about saying there is no secondary emergency access? In place.
Viable.
Or viable, yeah, viable secondary emergency access. For um, well, let's say emergency egress. For Big Mountain. The Big Mountain area.
What what were you saying, Dave?
I was just saying that that's not an objective. It could be some information in the background when we talk about that, but yeah.
That makes that makes sense. I could make a note here. Um, that's give me that language thing, John.
There is no.
There is no secondary emergency access or viable secondary emergent.
Viable.
Viable second.
Access.
And not access the egress.
Egress.
For the Big Mountain area.
So why don't I? I'm adding this here as a placeholder. And um.
I mean, it would be in the.
And I'll add it down into the narrative.
It's important enough that I think it needs to be in a jet. Right here, we're.
It's not an objective, but it's reciting of something that's a fact. Just in terms, it's not an objective. It is just simply a fact. Your status quo is current. I don't really see how it's an objective.
So I think that community feedback that we got was. Remove the reference to Ha- to Haskell Basin Road. Quit referencing that. And then adding this language somewhere in the text means we're saying there. There is no secondary access. We're not saying Haskell Basin maybe, but it's not good. We're not saying Haskell Basin and we're saying there is none. And so along with that, if everyone agreed with this.
If that's a case, not reject it. That's just.
Yeah, so it's just a placeholder for him to put into the the text in the narrative later. Yeah, so does everybody agree with?
So now, shall we uh address the the text on that very point right now?
Sure, it makes it easier for me.
We can.
Okay.
Can I just ask one clarifying question because I just think it's important for the public to understand that. When we talk about where we're wanting to discourage development, can you just kind of explain on Big Mountain? Like, how much of that Big Mountain does this apply to just so that when people are watching this? Like for those who might not be following it as closely. Where are we discouraging the development on Big Mountain?
And that's a great point. Most of the privately owned land on Big Mountain that's developable is owned by Whitefish Mountain Resort and they have plans for their development, their overall master plan. There's very, I mean, there's very little publicly owned land. It's kind of subdivisible up there. There's a couple of spots on Big Mountain Road. Um, that are very steep that somebody, you know, with a lot of engineering and things could potentially put a subdivision in. You know, the the lower half of the mountain, but when you're talking about up by the resort level, it's all the mountain pretty much that owns all that stuff. I mean, there's. They could sell off some private land. Who knows what their plan is long term, but in general, I mean, it's not, we're not talking about a whole bunch of available property. But you know, Stolt's were to sell another parcel like they did to Iron Horse or something that, you know, something like that could happen.
So I just wanted to clarify.
The bottom of page twenty-two would be where John's, oh, you already got it.
Yeah.
The bottom of page twenty-two would be where John's comment would. If you wanted to do that, that's where that would.
And it had already basically in there.
So if you wanted to add something like that, it would be to me, that's the only place from here to.
Yeah, I think that's exactly where it should go. So um, Richard is saying we strike the whole sentence saying that there is purportedly a summer secondary access. That whole sentence comes out. So and instead, we say. There is no viable secondary emergency access, no egress in place for the Big Mountain area.
Okay, so this highlighted section right here would be there. Is no, sorry. Viable secondary. Egress for the Big Mountain community.
I mean, you could say currently, because someone could put something in at some point.
Well.
There is currently. Yeah.
That makes it a little more iffy.
No, what what part?
I wouldn't put currently in there. We're saying there is no, and that's.
So.
I mean, we could say as of twenty twenty-five, but isn't that a given throughout this whole document that we're writing it now? Yeah, so I don't think we have to have currently or, yeah, just there is no. Okay.
On a personal level, I think. I think just that's my thought. So what is it?
Hey.
I I defer to my column. Like I said, I will make a motion to leave it as currently.
Anyone who wants currently and the Senate says it is, okay, we all love currently.
It can be a a note that open up. Yes, and we are.
Not yet.
Okay, so then somebody, if some, let's see, some of the board members. If you can read what Alan has put, does it appear to be correct? I can't read it.
Go back to the paragraph.
So are we back on twenty-two or at the objectives?
Back to the.
All right.
Twenty-two.
I just wanted to see the full chunk that you took out and make sure it was. Yeah, I agree with that. So he's taken out John from there is purportedly to fire trap during wildfire situation. And then added there's currently no viable that sentence. Okay. All right, everyone agrees? I think we already said we agree. Great.
Uh, back to the objectives.
Yes.
Yes.
Or that way.
So I have something to add to what we have just now that we've. Dealt with where we would add it in the narrative. I guess we can leave that there because there might be somewhere else or you already took it out. Yeah, that's fine. So I have a potential addition to E. We talked about. Develop a current capacity of the sole egress from Big Mountain and what current level of building by by right might add. And this is something that we talked about multiple times with what is? What is the actual route and what is the capacity of that route? And then as far as building by right on the mountain, you know, we just talked a little bit about. The fact that the resort owns the majority of it. So what could they build by right without? Us discouraging anything and what can we currently handle without that? Second egress. So I'm just wanting to say develop. An idea of carrying capacity of the road that's there. And also an idea of what can be built by right up there. Yes.
Which I actually think rather than being the limiting factor, I think it's cities' agreement with the Big Mountain Sewer District.
That's what I would say.
Where we limit. The current agreement limits them to two thousand equivalent equivalent residential units. Right now, they're just under a thousand, but they have plans for six hundred or so that. But I mean, it it. Two thousand ERUs is is the max unless. City council grants them additional. ERUs through some type of a council. I'm sure we're more likely to annex some people that happens, right?
Was that in the original twenty year ago agreement?
It was.
Okay. That, I think that's correct. I mean, I think that would be the way to go. That's the limiting factor. Because we really don't have. Any.
It's a state highway too.
I know, I we just don't have any teeth.
But did we say anywhere in hazards and water and sewer and any of that to develop? An idea of what build by right is up there? I know we say what the capacity is for the sewer or we say what the capacity, you know, we could look at what the capacity is for the road. But do we have any idea of build by right up there? It may be a separate section. Go ahead.
A. I think that Craig just outlined how many they they can build by right. And B, I think we're getting. And B, I think we're getting into the weeds of, of Big Mountain development. And we're here to discuss the transportation plan and not the development on Big Mountain. And that's just my thought.
Thank you.
Thanks for keeping.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're on, yeah, we're on goal two and there's fifteen of them or something like that.
For sure. And there's a lot of this that.
Page four.
We will deal with again, but I want, since it's been public comment, I want to bring it up. And then we can move on. We don't have to add it, we discussed it. Okay.
Okay, Madam Chair.
Yes.
I just heard some facts that I hadn't heard before, maybe others knew that. I think we should have something in the text which reflects that, uh, the water and sewer agreement. Uh, limits the two thousand units maximum on Big Mountain. Uh, that there are, what, six hundred and seventy-five now and six hundred more planned?
Oh, don't quote me on the actual numbers. I, I, I think there's roughly a thousand now and they have approximately sixteen hundred planned, so another six hundred.
We had that in water and sewer.
It is, it's in the, it's in the public facility moment.
Yeah.
Those facts are in.
Yeah.
Oh, great, okay.
Yeah.
I can.
Yeah, look, it's in, it looks.
Check on the website. The most recent version on.
Okay. So.
That's why I'm back there.
So, so I think that as far as objective E, sounds like everyone agrees that now we've taken out Haskell Basin. We can move on from this. We're missing.
Yes.
A member, okay. So we're going to move on from E. To the next objective that someone wants to discuss.
Yeah, one hundred and seventy-eight currently and fifteen twenty-two. Estimated.
That the.
One's on the, the new column, I believe, on the last, but it's filmed right now.
That is a charge of putting numbers on the growth policies.
Like, by the time it's adopted, it could.
By the time it's adopted, everything is outdated. That's why I try to avoid that one again.
So that's fifteen hundred and twenty-two total.
Yeah.
Which is about six hundred, adding six hundred more.
That are, that have been approved. Approved by whole county, county, I think, through, through county zoning, through subdivision. That the city didn't approve, the county did. So fifteen twenty-two that are currently approved by subdivision, which leaves them four hundred and seventy-eight. Are those filled or just approved? Just approved, there's only eight hundred and seventy-eight filled.
And this objective is discouraging new subdivision development without. A specific road that would meet city standards. A secondary egress, right? Okay. So let's move on to the next objective in this. Area that we have comments on.
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
I'm not sure I understand what it, additionally, East West Arterial Collector Street connectivity. Especially from Pine Avenue to Spokane Avenue. Wha- what's that?
Uh, that's East Seventh Street. The connection, um, of East Seventh Street between, that doesn't currently exist by the fly shop between Kalispell.
Oh, okay. Have we received any public, public comment on that? I don't recall any.
It was more specific. We originally had some specific, I believe, connection points. And that was what a lot of public comment was about, not right, Craig? We had some more specific.
And next one is that particular, which objective is that?
Yeah.
Yeah, we just tried to broaden it.
Was that a part of the Columbia Avenue?
No.
Well, it's part of that whole avenue's neighborhood.
Right. But there was a Columbia Avenue connection that was.
I mean, it's, it's, it's basically summarizing a bunch of the things with the transportation plan. It, because there is a lack of connectivity, especially, you know, from the high school, multiple directions. So it's just.
That, you answered my question.
Yeah. So I'm sorry, I was, I was speaking specifically to the Pine Avenue, to Spokane Avenue, but it also does talk about north-south arterials. Such as Monica, Whitefish Avenue, Baker Avenue, Carroll Avenue. So extending those north-south as well, where they don't currently connect between them too.
Right, Madam Chair. So was Columbia Avenue specifically omitted from that? Description?
That's the other.
Okay.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, we're talking about. East west.
Thank you.
Um, when, well, I'm going to bring up Jay. Are you after Jay or before Jay?
I'm a man.
Okay, you're still on that, go ahead.
So. Uh, it says especially from Pine Avenue to Spokane Avenue. Those are two parallel streets. And if it really means extending from Pine, Pine Avenue, the Seventh to Spokane, I think we should say that. Otherwise, it could mean east-west. Third, Fourth, Fifth, Sixth, all as corridors or collector streets. And since it doesn't mean that, we should make it very clear, we're extending from Pine. To Seventh to Spokane.
You're saying especially extending, I'm adding extending?
Yeah.
Like that? I don't think it would be bad, especially extending from Pine.
To Seventh. Pine to Seven to Spokane.
Connecting.
Connecting.
Especially.
Oh. Extending Seventh between.
Seventh, especially extending Seventh Avenue.
Is that spelled or a number? Seventh.
Seven.
Avenue. From Pine Avenue.
Oh, wait, uh, Seventh would be a street. East west all streets.
Streets between, maybe we shouldn't mention Pine, just mention Seventh to Spokane.
Especially extending Seventh Street.
You know, go through a lift station, a very steep hill. And it's also, we'll take out the parking lot of both the fly shop and whatever that funky little A-frame is.
Dispenser. That's okay.
Well, Justin won't be too.
The parking lot that exists in a right of way. Doesn't.
Oh, that's correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it was made abundantly clear with the. With the fly shop.
Okay.
It's still good.
Too fine, Justin.
Nope.
And it made required.
We're taking out Pine and extending to Spokane.
Extending Seventh to Spokane, yeah.
Well, you have to.
Did they get it right?
Yeah.
Said it, it might not be happy either.
Okay.
In terms of.
All right, everyone agreeing with that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Clarifying, yes, okay. All right, moving on. Uh, so. Any further comment on page four? Or I have the comment on Jay.
Excellent. Okay.
So on Jay, I've, yeah, I'm having. I want Jay to be more prominent because I think that that is the bulk of our. Comments, um. From last time are protecting residential neighborhoods by designing the road network to minimize the incursion. Of commercial and transient traffic into residential neighborhoods. And it's been. Talked about adding something specifically about Columbia Avenue here. I don't know that we necessarily have to add or call out Columbia. We kind of clarified why it's listed as a collector. But what does the board think as far as how to rectify? The fact that Columbia is called out as a collector and they're very concerned, does anyone have?
It's, Columbia is not called a, there's no parking. I think there are a lot of them parking, so does that mean it's still a collector?
Well, it's based on the vehicle trips.
Yeah, it's vehicle trips, not.
The, the road counts outside, you determine what those streets are, but not the case when the Craig finds out more, but the number of vehicle trips makes that a collector and the fact that it connects all over through.
Sure, okay.
And so it's, you know, whether or not how the street's designed is irrelevant. That's, thank you. But we could serve it as portions of it in the map, you know, but.
Like from first to seventh?
I would be supportive of not showing Columbia Avenue as a collector north of Seventh Street.
Okay.
But it's hard for me to say that Columbia Avenue between thirteenth and Seventh doesn't serve as a collector.
Right.
Oh, it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a good.
Does.
Very smooth, eh?
So some way to designate that. I want it to be clear that we understand those vehicle trips are happening wherever they are, and that's why it was named a collector. But by naming it that, it doesn't mean that the city will attempt to change first through Seventh or encourage traffic there. Um, so this J to me is very important because it says protect residential neighborhoods by designing the road network to minimize this. Yes.
I may be missing it, does that just mean changing the map?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
I think you're going to want to change page.
Absolutely. Yeah, I think.
That you're gonna.
So, so we can change the map, the map, if you remember, there was a growth classifications map?
Yes, I think.
It would be changing Columbia from where to where?
Versus Seven. Yeah.
Okay, so change, so change map. Change map. Um, of Columbia, this is just a, this is just, yeah, my.
Placehold.
For your, for your Columbia, I'm, I'm sorry, we're looking at Seven, I'm sorry, Two, Second.
Second.
Second to Seven.
Second to Seven, second to Seven, yeah.
So I can change that, you can add something, I leave, I can change the map that you guys have on the last two pages, and that's Seven, hasn't it? I can make it a little bit greater.
That.
Yeah.
That was what I was going to suggest.
I'm not wanting to manipulate. To reflect.
As people looked at the map, those maps, so those maps are compilations of all of our transportation, adopted transportation plans pulled in one place. That's what I did, I don't do them all. Um, and so I think that's why so much alarm is people didn't know that since nineteen ninety-six, this has been talked about. Until they saw it all in one place. So I could change the map and that, that would. Because I can go Greenwood off the map, there was a Greenwood standing on the other map and we took that, I took that off.
Well, that's what I thought, you were very fast to take Greenwood off because that's not, yeah.
That was my fault.
That's the print it though, print it and that assuaged a lot of fears and I appreciated that.
The new version, you guys not take that off.
Yeah, for sure.
Good.
On the side, I'm, you're going to want to go to page ten.
Yes, I'm there.
Columbia or collectors?
Just get the word Columbia off because it says may include the Edgewood, Pharaoh Center.
Or you could put Columbia Avenue from Second to Seven. Some of the collectors, or I mean, no, you're right, take it off.
Take.
So this is not a change to an objective, but it would be a direction to staff to change the map a little bit. So I think that's what we should vote on.
Yeah.
And delete Columbia.
So, so, well, we're at ten, so is everybody good? And I'll go back.
On page ten, yes, so deleting Columbia Avenue.
Still leaving Columbia Avenue.
Yes.
And then I'm going up, I mean, it's really the map, but, um, I put a comment to myself here.
And Jay.
That that map will be changed, so I'll make it a local street. Columbia will be, it'll be gray, if you look at the map, I think it's red, I don't know what color it is now.
Yellow.
Yellow?
Yeah.
So that yellow will go away and it'll be a gray line.
Okay, so everyone.
It'll be a residential street then?
Yeah, it's only the local residential.
Mike, I don't know.
Well, look at all the, if you look at all the rest of the roads on that map, they're like just little thin gray lines.
Yeah.
It'll become a little thin gray.
Okay, that's.
But from Seventh down to Thirteenth, it will stay.
Second to Seventh, the rest of it won't change.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so everyone who agrees to remove Columbia from page ten collector and then to also change the map, yes, great, thank you. Thanks, Alan. Okay. So. Now we're on to, uh, unless there's anything else on, uh, goal two. Um, then I will move on.
Alan, is there something that I had to go to, but I just don't want to discuss while we compare?
Um, you, you, I might.
Objectives.
I know that you had talked a little bit maybe away, and maybe I'll let you.
I just.
Can probably articulate that better, I have the language too. Maybe you just talk about the reason.
Well.
So, I have the language out here, I can take it and we can.
Under M Lupa, you know, there's certain, um, criteria for appealing different projects. And one of them is if you haven't, your growth policy pro- process, haven't considered every possible impact. That a project's going to incur. And most of the stuff is covered, but transportation is always the one that every single project. Comes up, you know, it's going to increase traffic. And then if we don't have any specific language in our growth policy that talks about how, what kind of criteria we have for that. People are going to say, you didn't consider that because your growth policy does, just ignores that point completely. And so we talked about what kind of an objective can we put in there? Um, that's going to show that we have considered that and that maybe there's some more work that we have to do with our public engineering standards. Looking at a little service criteria that would give a broader base and more specific criteria for either, you know, saying. You know, a project can be approved, but they have to make some improvements or a project just, it doesn't, you know, it's going to reduce levels of service to a point that it's not acceptable, so that product is not going to get approved.
Very broad and generally.
Very broad, general, and then.
That should be under goal three.
Okay.
Not anybody. It should be under goal three because goal three talks about land use, transportation connection.
Yep, you're right.
And that, so, it, my opinion, and we haven't really gotten there yet, I'll put this, I'll red mark this in. Um, if that's where it should go, because I thought about the land use, transportation connection and the, it's more appropriate. Because the second one is more connected. I don't know.
So you're, sorry, you're proposing to add something that.
Just another objective under goal three.
Okay.
Got to get, yeah, sorry, my fault first.
No, we're just like.
So when we get there.
So we don't forget about it.
If we're not, if we're done with goal two, we're going to hit it right.
Okay, uh, just a second, I'm going to clean up some comments from board members quickly, commission members, John?
Uh, I'm just addressing what is now goal three, so.
Okay.
Leave that.
Phil, what are you, are you addressing three, or are you?
So maybe this would be a good time to ask Craig my big question, which is, are our arterials currently at capacity?
It's a good question for the level of service conversation that we were about to have. I would say at peak hour, our arterials are at capacity for sure. You know, July. Our arterials are not city-owned and maintained, so that's where the age of the question. Baker is, yeah, that's correct.
So, and then. Um, and that's, yeah, we had that conversation on Baker one day. And, and, um, you know, I've been, I've paid attention to it since and it, pretty much any time of day, it can be backed up well past. It just, I don't know, doesn't seem to be any sort of a, you know, nine and then five type of. Thing. Um, but it is consistent. And, um. So if we're talking about transportation being the, the bottleneck, right? Like water and sewer is up in the mountain. Um, as a limiting factor, I, 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 if, if we think that that's the case, or if that's the case, I think we should state it. As a fact.
No, it's certain times of the year, like right now, no problems with those streets, even at level A, right, or B at least. But there's certain times of the year, and it's like the worst case scenario, do you drive, you know, design the, the church parking lot for Easter Sunday or for every Sunday? You know, it's like the city streets are that way and if it's a, the state, that's the one that's in control of that. And they, you know, they did have a plan for, you know, to kind of fix some of that, but we couldn't come to an agreement with the city and state on how to do that. And it might be fifty years before those improvements come through now. So we're going to have to live with things.
I understand that, I, and I, and I, I, I see where you're coming from. But I, I still think that somewhere in here, and since we were about to have that discussion. I think maybe in the narrative or somewhere, that if that's the case. And, and we. That we should state it in here like we did with the, uh, the secondary access up Big Mountain. Because I do think it's a, it's a fundamental. And to what we're meant to discuss.
Would you add it and it's all our objective?
Did we have a, you didn't have like a little. Narrative in. Free transportation decisions? There is, that's one that. There is, it's one that's, it's in italics underneath.
Mm-hmm.
There are something, having it yourself is not a capacity, but as it goes into town, certainly has problems.
Well, so my use of arterials is too broad.
I mean.
For this section.
I would think it, you know, would need to be more specific.
Yeah.
There's areas discussed, and it's, and it's, it was very much based on, you know, on a power date, yes, or terrible, you know, July during under the big sky, can't get anywhere. You know, school day at five o'clock at Thirteenth Street, terrible, right, but, you know, summertime, that's not bad, but, you know, so everything moves around, it's not, you can't always point your finger that it's always that way, right, and so.
Well, I mean, that, I guess that depends on.
We have no way to improve those things, and traffics, you know, as we become more and more popular, and more hotels are built, and more and more people come here, we have no control over that, those roads are just gonna get worse and worse, right? And so even the developments on this sort of thing, it'll figure it.
Okay, so we're gonna, this seems like we could talk about this for a very long time, but we need to figure out a specific place to put it.
I would appreciate Craig's input.
Just real quickly, um, do you want to throw in there the objective that we're recommending regarding level of service?
Yeah, I did, it's, it's on down, if you go to goal three, page six, I added that.
Yeah, I just want us to have a place to put it.
Yeah, so what, what we're recommending is revise city of Whitefish engineering standards to improve transportation impact evaluation criteria for land use projects, so.
I'm sorry, where are you reading?
I just red marked that in there. That's kind of what Dave was talking about. And so the intent here is to improve our engineering standards, which is the document that we use to, um, you know, design roadways, um, to improve the impact evaluation, which is essentially, we look at the current level of service as an A, B, C, D, or an F, and what will it be for your transportation impact analysis after the project is created?
Yes.
Um, and so we're acknowledging that we need to pay more attention to level of service, um, but perhaps in this objective, we could acknowledge current roads are cer- currently at capacity, or something like that. I think it said, the, yeah, transportation study said nearing ten interse- ten intersections are failing, I think it said during certain.
So this is broad, let's take a vote, if everyone likes this being A on three, yes, everyone agrees? Okay, so that stands.
Thank you.
For this specifically, thank you, yes.
Okay, so back to Scott's suggestion, uh, the, the goals and objectives are for the planning process, so we could say, recognize that our arterials are at capacity at rush hour, um.
At some times of the day, during cer- during certain times of the year.
Right. So I couldn't, you, I wasn't.
Okay, at certain.
Oftentimes.
At some times in the day, it would be fine.
Intermittently.
At some time, at some times in the day.
Well, at some point, yeah.
Off, just often at capacity, is that not?
Yeah, yeah.
Often.
Sure.
You wanna.
End point of the eight oh five.
I mean, that's a, that's a big broad thing, and the thing that we, we want this to actually be usable and not just showing that we're.
It's been an objective, not a comment.
Yeah.
My, my concern is alleviated by the first sentence of A, that you added based on what Craig said. Um, but I, I'm not gonna argue against that addition right there at all.
I think what they added in A is, is a good idea, but it's separate from what Scott's talking about, so we should, we should have it. And also, Dave raised the concern that, uh, we need to recognize that population growth will cause traffic counts to increase. We can simply recognize that also, so that we have recognized that, and I haven't left it out.
I mean, it's physical, it's kind of assume, population, it's.
Yeah, but I can see where he's coming from, because we're supposed to have considered these impacts of future development.
Which is precisely what I raised.
We're, we're recognizing that we're, you know, considering that.
But I'm still.
Recognize that population growth will increase traffic count. That's a separate one from what Scott suggested.
We'll say, Alan, new objective?
Yes.
Why is there no objective?
Well, that's stating, stating a fact.
It's a statement, but is there?
We, we can make a statement and say, we, we should recognize this. We've done that before.
Revice the engineering standards, I am a little unclear, so we're revising standards to improve transportation, so if something is at a D or an F, how are we revising our standards to do an impact evaluation? I'm, I'm just making sure that we're not saying, oh, it's at a D, but now we revised our standards, and so we can still develop there the D or an F.
I think the engineering standards would have more requirements for developers to improve existing intersections to make sure that they do. Service.
In the, in the whole level of service thing, I mean, if. Units have different acceptable levels of service for, you know, and so.
But are developers changing, wait, I'm confused, because most of this is mounted Department of Transportation, right?
Developer comes in, we require them to do a traffic impact analysis or a study, if they're over a certain number of vehicles.
Two hundred.
Yeah, and so, um, but, you know, depending, you know, depending on what time of year they do that, sometime, you know, obviously in July, almost all of our intersections are at a D or an F, right? No matter what, and, you know, so, and the, it, a small department might make a difference for that. Yeah, the arterials, but are there improvements that can be made, and then, you know, at what point does that trigger us to say, no, that, that's not acceptable anymore, without either doing some improvements, or if you can't do improvements, or you can't pay for some future improvement, or contribute money towards a future stoplight or something?
But how are moving that needle to change the standard?
Standards to improve the evaluation criteria, right now, our evaluation criteria is minimal, um, but that's just, you know, it's, it's.
So this would be, instead of saying you're at a D and you can still build, this would be you're at a B, so you can build, you're at a C, D, F, you cannot.
Well, it's, it's evaluating the impact of the development, so if the intersection is currently at a B, and the development is gonna reduce it to a C, what would be the cost to keep it at a B, essentially?
Yeah, what would they need to do?
What would that, what would that developer have to contribute in order to maybe?
Then there's maybe nothing that can be done, just, like Baker Avenue, well, how do you fix that, right?
Well, you can add a lane, I think.
Oh, right. Yeah, or you add a roundabout, or you add a signal, you know, I mean, the four-way stop is, yeah, one development, is it gonna? Sure, no, that's where, that's where I think we language the talks enough.
Three or four up there.
Share of the project, which we've done for certain developments, but we really don't have a mechanism for doing it, or a, or a policy and a criteria, and there, and there's places out there that have very specific language of how they can improve things, and we have made, you know, like the, the yards here, and we, you know, they could return the signal, or they're gonna have to put a signal in at some point once it gets developed.
Right.
You know, that kind of a thing, but.
I guess, yeah.
That's an easy fix, because there's a dead end street, right, but, you know, not everybody has that luxury, something happening on Wisconsin Avenue, it's a state highway, you know.
I, I'm thinking primarily of Baker, I mean, I did something that we do have, but, but to bring this to a close, um, I personally said, I understood what Craig meant by the engineering standards. Um, I think it gives him a, a tool that he may presently lack, which is why I asked the question, because I feel Fort Craig is over there trying. So, um, I'm satisfied with, with the language there.
Are we keeping our several road thing there?
Yes, well, that was a separate one, which we haven't voted on.
Yeah, that's why I'm in, sir.
Separate one is.
Hmm, I don't think it can be its own.
It's, it's.
I'm just having a hard time with this revive. For impact evaluation criteria for. Uh, something. Ring best call B.
That's curfew.
Do we need to?
Take a break, maybe?
Round five must finish in the same month. Um, my issue here is that we have a lot to still get through, now our technology is failing again, and we have nothing to do on December third.
Well.
So. To extend this, but if we're going back and watch, and we have no minutes and no way to see what happened in this that, that, that's a hard thing, yeah.
Water and sewer, we had a meeting in October and made changes, and then we voted on those changes in November, so we extended past the month that time, and then, really.
We should do it again for.
We should do it again, because we have open hours.
Yeah.
Open time on December third.
Thinking that we should, yes.
I'm sorry, Alan's just.
I'm gonna look at Dana, because it really comes down to the council, but, um, the intent of that was because things were stacking up, and we needed to keep them open, we don't have a work, we don't have anything scheduled for work since December third. So, so, so I, I, I mean, I don't know if we're going against what the council told us to do, but we didn't have anything scheduled for December third.
I mean, I think it, you know, it's just, uh, the public would probably, I don't know, who's still here, may, may appreciate not having to stay for three more hours, I don't know. Um, but also, um, I'm guessing it's still reporting based on the actual team requirements, maybe.
Maybe coming through my speaker or my computer, but.
But, um, I, I don't see a problem with you going to December third, because there's nothing, um, it's only three days after the end of the month.
So I want us on December third, I'm gonna jump ahead before we, um, before we end this, and before we decide if we're going to end this, and then also um, to say that the idea for December third would be to finish this last, because essentially now we have two more goals and objectives, and then whatever has continued into the body that we haven't already caught, um, and then that December third meeting also, we can do housekeeping items as far as procedurally what we're doing, I know that Mary presented, and there may be a few things that you guys wanna talk to us about, what does M Lupa allow, are we within the bounds, are we doing, you know, um, I want us to have a time set aside to talk about things like that, and then to also create the, oh, good.
Yeah, sorry.
Hello, world, um, so first.
Did that at the council meeting Monday night, you might have been.
And some of this too, um, we may be live again, but it may not be on YouTube, since it's not memorialized anywhere.
It's been recorded, it's on his computer, I think, so.
Okay.
The, the statue, the stairs, it's right in the owl, and.
I'm gonna be cynical and say that I don't trust it.
Yeah.
I don't trust it, the owl is nocturnal, but it's not working well late.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
If I get a second, then we could have a quick discussion based on what we're seeing, would that be all right?
That would be fine.
Second.
Okay.
All in favor?
So there is a public, there, yes, so, sorry, Angie, you go ahead.
I can answer this one, you guys.
Okay.
If you decide to meet on December third, I would, but Mary's comments as an agenda item, so. They're out there, people know that.
Yes, and since we did not close discussion on this, I do not want to take public discussion that relates to transportation right now, so, um, I'm, I know this is confusing, and it's dragging on, but I, there are some things in here that we really need to be careful on and see how they actually impact, instead of just saying that sentence looks good. Um, so we've had a motion and a second to adjourn, and we're gonna discuss.
I'd like to recognize Alan for the discussion.
All I'm gonna say is, this draft, and now dated November nineteenth, it does twenty-five, this, this and the agenda will be in your packet, along with any new comments that I received.
Thank you.
You'll get this version, red marked up to tonight, with today's date on it, any new comments, and then.
Okay, so any written comments we can review, it's just not.
All of them, just the new ones from tonight.
Oh.
Oh, I think, yeah, oh.
They're all over being there.
I think, well, I'll just move them all.
Yeah. Yeah, just move them all over, Toby?
Yeah, the one that I hope to get is the red marked version with the new.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
That's, that's what I'm saying, that's, what you're gonna get is dated today. With all the comments that he's just all gonna sign.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what you're gonna see red marking there.
So poll of everyone who's available December third. Yes. Now, very, we can meet on the twenty-fifth.
I agree, in January, so.
It's not that.
Okay.
Who to call the question?
Thank you.
Got a public comment.
Sorry, what? Public comment? I mean, we already said we're adjourned, and.
We haven't voted.
You have to have a second comment there.
I'm sorry, I cannot understand you.
Before a general public.
Okay, so we voted to, we, yes, so we're gonna have just general public comment, but not on transportation, Mary, you're up.
Okay, I agree, but I just wanted to clarify some data, and correct you if I'm not accurate. Um, we did meet this morning, and I left that meeting with a little bit different understanding than what I'm hearing tonight, so I just wanted to clarify, it's my understanding that, um, this staff is amenable to our suggestion that public comments not be integrated into another draft going forward, that was a big issue. And I left the meeting today thinking there was not agreement on that, if there is agreement upon that, I wanted to let you know that that made us feel much better.
Yeah, there's agreement, but it was, it was, uh, without, with their direction.
Right.
Make that change, so, but they, for the, yeah, and it's to check. Yeah, preference will not change how we're doing things last minute, but if the planning commission wants to do that, no problem.
I, I understand that what drove that is I wanted the planning commission and the public to know that we were reading the public comment and trying to incorporate in the draft.
Yeah.
That's a lot of work.
So this is.
So if you don't want me to do that.
We'll discuss December third.
Yeah, I'm trying to say, you guys work, but.
Yeah, no.
I will be gone December third.
Okay.
I will be here.
Okay, thank you, so all of this we'll discuss and make decisions.
And I just wanted to make that clear, that you're on that picture.
Thank you.
I did check, really, so, hey, misunderstanding.
Yes, go ahead. Okay.
Just wanted to address, or earlier, I need consultants for here, and there's a back and forth, with Alan, where, um, they both said that there's currently a housing being built. Um, I think that's super important, because that's why Shelter Publicity exists, sorry, the director of three or six off Avenue, um, he as an organization exists, we could be a better. Um, so I think that statement is very narrowly true, in that given the rates of house, of units that need to be built under the housing needs assessment, we are building that number. But I think it's more broadly false, and that I think that number is very misleading. Um, I think it's only true if you believe that the population growth rate of Whitefish is accurately reflecting demand currently. Um, so the housing needs assessment is based on our population and our population growth, and the way that it determines the number of additional housing units you would need is two things, it's the population growth, and it's a survey that looks at overcrowding in housing. What it does not consider at all is the fact that there are a massive amount of housing units that could be built in Whitefish, that is possibly needed by Whitefish, that we've shoved it to the county, that we've shoved it to Columbia Falls, so, so this is how that data is lying to us. Whitefish dramatically underbuilds housing, so over sixty percent of the workforce needs to commute here, so our population grows slowly, so the housing needs assessment says that we don't need to build much more than a hundred units a year. So my second point is just basically that units are created, well, this was discussed earlier, I think there's more agreement on this, and I think the planning commission um, is going to do a lot of good work in terms of allowing smaller units, allowing more high density, which. More height density, which does reduce costs per unit. Um, and nothing, nothing in this discussion, nothing that Shelter W F has ever. Pushed for is anything about minimizing the need for subsidy, uh, the Whitefish Housing Authority and how we, which does phenomenal work. And if it was my personal policy, I think a hundred percent of the resort tax would go to affordable housing, so it's not about reducing that tool. But I, we just really disagree with the notion that currently we're building enough market rate housing and that it's all good. Because the biggest source of deficit is the housing that's being built in other cities and workers having to commute here. So I say that as, um, the executive director of an organization that talks with a bunch of renters and workers. I say that as someone who has had to move out of Whitefish because of housing costs and will probably have to do it again at some point. And I say it where that's really true for most of my friends as well, at a different point throughout their life. So I think we shouldn't narrowly say the housing needs assessment says we're building enough units. And just take that at face value and this is the biggest source of the lack of units, so anyway, um, yeah, thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Katie. All right, go ahead, I'm going to go with the guy in the. Yes, yes, red shirt in the back, yes.
My name's Ryan. Thank you. My kids, we did the whole, I'm in school and I'm the one who wrote the name and make robot. Um, that are, I would, it's like I said, I've got a hundred dollars here for anyone that wants to bet against. Anyone in this room being able to, to own a robot in seven years, that can change your diaper. Just about build a house for a hundred thousand dollars and you're not going to have any more labor costs, you won't have workforce housing issues. Um. I'm not saying I want people to not have jobs, but the reality is you're going to do it well, if you have a lot, you'll be able to get. Housing plans with a, a wet stamp, a premium to go through funding. Uh, for a fraction of what it costs to have humans, an architecture firm will be able to do, AI will do the. I'm scary future, but it's not fifty, eighty years down the road, seven years. You're going to have a personal robot that can build a house and you can, well, the driver right now, they can play the ball, strike, sip, water, veto, very complex piece. Testable, you guys can get. They can carry a piano up to the top of the house, if you have a. Is what, what's been doing, you guys have made a lot of work and I appreciate that. It's not that much different than just in nineteen ninety. And by twenty thirty two, where people are just, great difficult, you're right.
Thank you, I know. Thank you. Paul, McCann. Now let's hear. I know, and it is confusing, I'm sorry, we're continuing this discussion. Again, and very general, yeah, and hopefully Craig has. Go ahead.
I guess the question is, is the issue of parking, transportation issue or not?
Well, it's an issue of a lot of things, but if your comment is general and not specific to in this page and this with this. It is, it's very specific, yeah. Uh, so what's our suggestion to submit it in writing so that we're not openly taking public comment, can you happily do that to us since it's specific? And then it will be in the pile with all the other things that we read every night again and, thank you. Um, and that can be as easy as an email to Michelle or Alan, it can be, it doesn't have to be long and it'll get cut in. Thank you.
Yeah, that's an observation, right? First time we're going to be, it's very encouraging, you know, operating, preparing, ready to invite.
Thank you.
So thank you guys for doing it.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah, thanks for coming again and again, we'll see you. Thank you, all right, any other general public comment, Rhonda, yes?
So I don't have a solution, this is an observation only, but, um, public comment is closed. You guys just went through a draft that had lots of new stuff in it since the public comment period. That the staff offered and, um, they were all good ideas, but the public never saw them. And you're working through them, making sausage and the public isn't participating in that. I don't know what the solution is, but it doesn't seem right.
Right, so we're not going to back and forth on this public comment right now, we're just going to receive it. And then we will close our meeting and invite you to come December third, um, so any further public comments or is that it? Okay. All right, thank you, any matters from the board? At all, other than voting to adjourn?
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving, all right, everyone in favor of adjourned? Thank you, thank you all. Public staff.